I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's all rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where liberty stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our Farmington School Board meeting tonight. It's nice to see lots of staff here in attendance for presentations later. The first item of business is we need an approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second, motion by Carraro, second by Doyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have an agenda. Next up is our superintendent update, and due to some travel plans, Superintendent Berg is not here today, and we have Ms. Lisa Edwards presenting for us today.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Tonight, I'm here to share the update, and so I have quite a list here for you. So first of all, I want to commend the five Farmington High School learners that earned the bilingual seal recently. The Minnesota Bilingual and Multilingual Seals is a voluntary program through the Minnesota Department of Education. And Minnesota Public School District's charter schools and non-publics may award Minnesota bilingual and multilingual seals to graduating high school learners who demonstrated the required levels of language proficiency in languages other than English, including American Sign Language and Indigenous American Indian Languages. So we had four gold and one platinum, and this is a huge honor. We've had quite a few EL staff that have been working towards this, and then they collaborated with a lot of our Farmington High School staff to make this happen. And so we hope to continue this program every year and make it available for our students to earn. We recently had ten Farmington High School students participate in the Self-Suburban Conference Arts Exhibition, with two of our students actually winning awards there. Rachel Baumann, the Tiger Debate and Speech Coach, was recently elected to the Southern Minnesota National Speech and Debate District Committee, so congratulations to her. Farmington High School was able to hold their annual cabaret performance a week ago, and many of our other music programs across the district are able to hold their spring concerts this year, so we're excited about those. So make sure that you're looking for updates as to when those are. We have our Earth Science and Astronomy teacher at Farmington High School, Tyler Wells, has secured some real lunar rocks from the Apollo program and is actually giving staff and students the opportunity to see these in real life, not just only in his classes, but he's opened it up to the whole high school to come and actually see these. Last week, our Bachmann students raised over $2,000 in their Hero Squad fundraiser for the Lymphoma and Leukemia Society. And to celebrate their accomplishment, the students and staff are participating in some fun activities over the next three Fridays on their morning announcements. So congrats to them. We've seen a lot of creativity with COVID with some of our normal activities that we do. So FES 4th grade actually held their annual wax museum outside this year due to COVID, so that was great that the students were able to still participate that and have some people come and visit. And then later this week, they are kicking off their fun run fundraiser, which will actually end in an outdoor run, an obstacle course that students will get to participate in. So still able to have some of those special activities. CEAC, which is the Special Education Advisory Council, has announced the winners of their Super Advocate Awards today. They are Angie Asher Carlson, Kathy Anderson, Diana Orth, and Jennifer Darrington. So congratulations to them and the work they do for our special education students across the district. If you haven't seen it yet, our Farmington website got a new look today as our redesign went live. And we periodically do these updates to really meet the most recent accessibility standards and then also to remain compatible with current technology. So make sure you check that out. We want to say a huge thank you from everyone across the district, elementary through secondary. A huge thank you to all our parent ambassadors and PTPs for all their support this year and then for organizing such amazing Staff Appreciation Week last week. So thank you to all of them and the work that they have done. And then just a note that this Wednesday, May 12th, is Nurse Appreciation Day. So an extra thank you to all of them and the hard work they have put in this past year. You don't always see it, but they've definitely gone above and beyond, working many nights and weekends, helping us to keep our students safe in the district. So a huge thank you goes out to all of our district nurses this week, as always. So that is all I have for the superintendent update.
Thank you so much. Lots of great news. Love hearing it.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Regarding the lunar rocks, are the other children in the district able to go see them, or is it only for the high school students?
It's just for the high school students right now.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is our Students School Board member update, and I believe Member Peggins said she'd start first.
Yes. So the end of the year is kind of wrapping up, so we don't have quite as much as last week, but there's still some worthy things of highlighting. So first, our BPA, which is Business Professionals of America, team competed at the national virtual competition from April 26th to May 8th. Students who placed in the top 10 of their event were recognized at the national competition. So Kaia Shuitt, Michelle Nolan, and Rachel Lynch placed eighth in the Administrative Support Team category, and Michelle Nolan placed fourth in the Advanced Spreadsheet Applications. In addition to this, looking at prom, which has been a big thing that we have talked about a lot at these meetings, the deadline for tickets has been extended through tomorrow due to regulation changes. Masks are now optional for outside portions, but they are still required for the inside portions of the event. There will no longer be pods of six required, and social distancing is still encouraged, but due to contact tracing protocols, it is no longer required for social distancing. And AP exams started last week, but I think Alicia will talk a little bit more about that. So.
Yeah, thank you. In the last week and in this week, students at Farmington High School have been taking their AP exams. I'm not sure if it's just me, but my classes have been a little more anxious and tense because of that. I took my first one last Friday. Additionally, the Farmington Literary Arts Magazine, name to be determined, is having their first info meeting digitally on this Friday on the 14th and in person on the 19th. We're preparing for our exec board so we can meet up throughout the summer, and so we can officially launch during the fall.
Well, those are all great news. That prom news is really exciting, hear the changes, but thanks for sharing that. And, you know, I think tests are going along at all grades and those sort of, because I know my children have been busy with testing as well. So it's just that time of the year. So thank you for that. All right, our next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with one motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the consent agenda, and it'll be acted upon separately. Does anyone have an item they wish to discuss? Casey, none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed in the agenda.
Okay. Motion by Colletta, second by Simmons, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a consent agenda.
Yeah, Madam Chair, can I just?
Yes, absolutely.
So just, I want to make everybody aware, and people in this room know this, Adam Fisher did not get fired from the school district. I've been getting several phone calls that Adam got fired because we have two new co-head coaches out there. Adam took a job back home. He's going to be immensely missed as a mentor, coach, and a teacher in the district. So if we can get some word out there just to make sure, because I was amazed how many people saw the Twitter response on that, and my phone just started ringing in emails. He meant a lot to the district. So if we could get something out there, just letting people know what he's doing, I think that'd be great. So.
Thanks for being back, Steve. All right. The next item of business is we're moving on to the reports and communications part of our agenda. And item A is the, we'd like to say the FATP's report and remaining QComp funds. And I know we'll get a good explanation of what all those alphabet soup is in a minute.
You don't want to start with a quiz first?
Well, you know, we could. We absolutely could. Go ahead. If you're running the show, go ahead.
Madam Chair and Board, thank you. I'm Chris Busman, Director of Secondary Learning.
And I'm Kendra Cadda, President of the Farmington Education Association.
And we are here to provide an annual update about Farmington's QComp program that's been in the district for 15 years now. And we'll get to a couple of those things first, but when we talk about, you might hear some different acronyms and such, but FATP's is one that's most common, and that stands for Farmington Area Teacher Professional Pay System. And so it's a mouthful, and so most everybody prefers to use the term QComp, because it's just a lot more easily understood throughout the state of Minnesota. And so as I mentioned, this was a program that since 2006 has provided some additional resources for our teaching staff of Farmington for three main purposes. It's to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers, encourages teachers to take on challenging assignments, and to increase student educational achievement, and finally, to provide incentives to encourage teachers to improve their knowledge and instructional skills. So a number of things that are really outside of kind of their instructional assignment is meant to kind of better the system. You'll see here that we'll be talking a little bit about what we call IGDPs, which are referred to as Individual Growth and Development Plans. So when we, for those of you that are familiar with the world's best workforce, right, we've structured five main goals, and underneath those, every building establishes a student achievement goal. And they've probably been most common, to use the NWEA data, where they will take a look at spring-to-spring individual growth. And so buildings will set a goal based on the number of students that actually meet their predicted growth score. Last year was the first year that we experienced a hiccup, because obviously we did not have students onsite to test, and it was not available to do remote testing. And so Kendra and I spent a good portion of the summer on a lot of webinars, as they were trying to anticipate, well, how do we pivot from this system where we don't have this data, and there happened to be some compensation that was tied to it? Ultimately, they ended up pausing that portion of it, because there was no real way to measure whether or not buildings accomplished those goals. And that led us into, this fall, because by October 1st, every building submits their new QComp goal for the year. And the challenge was, if the previous spring was spring-to-spring growth, and that's our current model, we don't have a baseline spring to start from. And you might remember that probably six to seven years ago, if not longer, we shifted from a fall-to-spring growth prediction from a spring-to-spring, because it was more accurate. And ultimately, the state gave districts a lot of leeway in establishing what their goals were for the year. And so we did look at doing kind of what was hoped to be a fall-to-spring growth model for many of our buildings. And even within that, there were lots of questions, because we knew that we were starting the year with over 1,000 learners in distance learning, and NWA was able to leverage a remote testing option for families. But in many regards, it changes, I think, a lot of the parameters, because of the testing environments that we set up, the training that we do for all of our proctors, I think a lot of the language that we use to ready our learners for what that testing environment looks like, a lot of those things we didn't have control of. But nevertheless, it was something that we moved forward on. And then from there, it scales out from the district goals to the building goals to individual teacher goals, right, where they take a look at, how am I, as a 7th grade language arts teacher or a 10th grade science teacher, how am I going to change my practices as a professional to try to help our building meet those individual building goals as well? And that's where really a lot of the power comes from the individuality of taking a look at a building goal and building strategic plan and saying, how can I dial in and connect to that to help support that overall goal? There are a number of positions, if you will, that came about as part of this QComp program, and I'll just walk you through a number of these just to have a greater context, but peer coaches. So anybody who is a probationary teacher within their first three years will typically have the building principal conduct a cycle of evaluations. And then if you happen to be a 10-year teacher, it's once every three years that you are part of that process. Well, what this does is this fills the void for teachers that are in the two years of their off-cycle evaluation to receive a lot of professional feedback from their peers. It's not evaluative, it's growth-minded, and it's about that focus of what it is that they're trying to accomplish. The mentor program is something that I will tell you without a doubt, I have a number of colleagues across the state where they do not have a formal mentoring program. And when you think about any type of industry, any type of organization, employee recruitment is number one, right? Employee retention is by far number two, because the investment in your workforce is such a critical component of the success of your organization. And so we are really proud of the fact that we have a mentoring program. All new teachers to Farmington get paired up with a mentor for the entire year, and there's little nuances if you happen to be teaching between a couple of buildings, what that support looks like. We also have facilitators of instructional support that I'll actually let Kendra in a little bit talk to about some things that we've done a little bit different with that program. At the secondary level, we have department facilitators. So think about our Social Studies Department or your Language Arts Department. They will have a representative that speaks on behalf of the department at a particular building and really helps navigate not only kind of the horizontal work that we're doing, but the vertical work throughout the system as well. At the elementary level, a department facilitator is really called a grade-level facilitator. So first grade at Riverview, third grade at North Trail, they serve the same function and purpose. Buildings also have data liaisons, one per building, where they act as kind of a harvester and analyzer of data, right, with the different platforms that we use. And so teachers, as part of their IGDP, might go to the data liaison and say, so I'm really thinking about how I can leverage my practices to focus on students that are new to the country in our EL program but are in maybe a co-taught English class model. What are some, you know, what does the data tell me about these learners? Because that helps them construct what their particular goal might be. And then really the people that oversee this at the building level is what we call, we call them the building committees, right, or it's the FATP's committees. But it's a group of people who help organize all of those positions above it for each one of the buildings. Because there is a tremendous amount of time and energy that goes into navigating, you know, not only the posting of positions and the filling of positions, but really kind of the ongoing week-to-week leadership that goes with peer coaching for an entire building at Farmington High School, right, where you've got well over 100 and some staff that would be part of that.
And so I'm going to speak now to the program evaluation summary that we do. So as you know, if you are a returning board member, that we do these annual reports at the end of the school year, and we no longer submit reports to the state, but we come here to share with you, you know, how the year has gone. As part of that process, we do an annual internal audit, and we do that through the FEA, as this is a program that is supported, collaborated with the district and with the FEA, what do we say, the FEA, part of the oversight of it, as it is contractual. So we do a rotation of buildings each year to check in with them on returning questions of, you know, how it's going, is your process the same. These career ladder positions that you just saw were, those are to be posted every year so that people can apply to them, and there's an interview process. And then we choose that. We oversee the IGDPs each year, making sure people have all the necessary parts to it, as that is part of our teacher development and evaluation requirement now with the state. This year, we did, the high school is always on the rotation, just we have one high school. We rotate between the two middle schools each year on who we check in with, and then the elementary setting, we rotate through them as well. So this year was Dodge, the high school, and then Aiken Road. We had some celebrations this year. We had some additional supports with our building teacher leaders, as we have every year, but this year particularly was challenging with all of the different changes in the learning models that we would go back and forth with. That added a lot of new experiences for staff that, you know, felt a lot of pressure anyway. And so in changing their typical approach to their instruction, to online learning, we needed to really find and research quickly, you know, what are those best ways of doing that. So these career ladder positions were very helpful in that with the peer coaches, the facilitators of instructional support, and of course mentors. We found that we had, of course, some increased collaboration among staff. It was all hands on deck, and people were excited to share new things that they found. We had opportunities for a lot of virtual learning, professional development opportunities, whether in district or external, that we were able to locate and share. Always consistent to the strategic plan. We have those posted in our buildings. We strive to keep that as our help in making decisions, you know, does this align with the strategic plan that we did develop? And then finally, just a review, two years ago, two more buildings, the two middle schools transitioned to a halftime release facilitator of instructional support. Previously, we had just three buildings. The other buildings would do a committee format, where there would be, you know, maybe four to five individuals performing that role, splitting the duties, but that wasn't release time. So that was happening by committee meetings after school, which serves a purpose. But we find in having this release time coaching opportunities, we get a lot more accomplished, and it's more real time, you know, during the day and not some after-school events that we have.
Let me talk a little bit about how this applied out, right? So I think it was March 17th last year that we had to kind of shift off into distance learning, and we had X number of days to get ready. And so the middle school principals, which I was one at the time, we were kind of wondering, what is the best way that we organize for whatever this learning might be? Because we had no idea if this was going to be two weeks, four weeks, or if it was going to be the rest of the year. And so I vividly remember that we took the. And so, I vividly remember that we took the principals, the assistant principals, and Kendra, who was FIS for Bachman, and Chad Olson, who was FIS for Dodge, and we spent probably four hours in a conference room. And we just started to work through what the scaffold of what a daily middle school experience would look like for a middle-level learner, right? And their insight as to the teacher classroom piece, because I am further removed from the teacher classroom than probably Kendra is, was very valuable in thinking through how we organize all of this stuff. And so, it was a super collaborative process. And then, that was just the beginning because it was the day-to-day work of how we continue to shift our practices. And in Farmington, we were very fortunate because these were things that we had been using as part of our flex days, right? There were a number of districts who, first of all, did not have the platform, they did not have the technology, they did not have the access, and they did not have a lot of the instructional practices that people had been working with. And so, their role was not only to help us set this up and to start it out, but it was to support, 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 support from a remote aspect of it. And so, it was, it was super critical. And then, even into this year, reorganizing, because what we did last year was not what we did this year, was reorganizing to that piece of it. So, I can't stress enough just how valuable that expertise and that voice was as part of that process.
Then, finally, looking ahead to next year, we want to continue exploring our new opportunities to always improve, especially with enhancing our coaching programs, you know, what do, how can we grow in that? What can we do better? And our mentoring practices. So, while we are fortunate, as Chris mentioned, that not a lot of districts have a mentoring program in place, there are still things that we could do better. Our program tends to focus just on first-year new teachers, but we would like to expand this opportunity to, you know, our second and third-year staff that still need that continuing support. Because again, you know, after recruitment, we do need to retain our teachers, and that's super important. Our virtual work this past year, we learned a lot. And I think we'll see new opportunities for how we can network and collaborate with each other between buildings and even districts to build our capacity and leadership and professional growth. We know that, you know, the research, excuse me, research studies show that student achievement is really closely connected with professional development. And in the Q Comp program, there are a lot of opportunities for professional development in various formats. So, we're just, we feel very lucky to have this programming here in Farmington.
And, you know, a year ago, you know, we did not have any concept of how this would transform the landscape of what education was for many people. And this is going to be a continued evolution for our staff, for our programs to think about, how can we offer a wide variety of programs to really meet individual needs? But again, we, I want to stress too, is that when they talk about the professionalism of this, the level of, not the level, the quantity of teacher candidates is not what it was 10 years ago. There were times when I would post a position for social studies that you would be above 300 applicants. You'll be lucky if you're over 20 for that piece of it. There were times that even for areas of math and for science and for special ed, that you would be in the 50 range, right? You might be single digits for many of these things. And so, not only is recruitment so important, but really supporting our people year after year after year to see, to see that this is a profession that I feel supported in and one that I can be successful in. Because it is, it is a significantly difficult experience to be a teacher, and we want to provide all the support that we can to help them navigate this ever-changing landscape. With that, we would entertain any questions the board may have.
Challenging part to me would be the collaboration part. How, how can we improve the collaboration, say, between North Trail and Meadowview and FES to say, hey, each school is different, they teach their own way, but yet, by talking instead of emailing with other teachers in that school, we can better understand and engage the kids even better? Hey, I picked something up from this teacher in this school instead of sending an email. How do we find that time for the educators to do that?
Well, that is a particularly challenging thing with our different starting times, right? One of the ways we do that, like with the elementary level, part of Q Comp, we have district coordinators for departments. So, you know, an elementary would have just one music teacher. So, they have opportunities to, within the elementaries, to have their own department meetings and have time to collaborate that way as organized by the coordinator. That's mostly, though, at the elementary level. We also have in our professional development days in the district that we have set where the kids are not at school. Those are also opportunities for us to connect and get together. But I think going back to the point about how we see even more opportunities to connect virtually will solve a lot of those problems.
Absolutely. I mean, that's, that's been the model of our work, right? Is that we've been able to come together virtually and still continue a lot of the things that before were site-dependent and travel-dependent. And even though we lived in a time where Skype has been around for a long, long time and a number of other platforms, we just didn't utilize it at the large scale that we do now. And it will have a place in what collaboration looks like for our staff into the future.
Yeah, I think that's beneficial, but personally, my work, I get tired of the Zoom calls. I want to physically come in and see a live person and actually talk to them, even though, I guess, you're technically wasting time because you can just do it from your desk and stuff. Is there anything else we could do better to give, to allow that time for educators to actually do the, more of the in-person? Or is that, you know, through teacher workshops and stuff like that? Is that the only way we can do it?
I think there's a quite, there's quite a bit of a demand on our time during teacher workshop times, right? Within the departments, within the grade levels buildings. So, to have that inner-building opportunity, I will say, it would be helpful to have more, more time to do that where we're, you know, not within the school day with the students, but have some time to really work on such initiatives as our, you know, moving to competencies for a lot of folks. There's a lot of work to be done there, and it is difficult to find that time.
Yes, go ahead. This is really a great program. Can you tell us more about the, there are two pieces. The first is that you mentioned goal-setting from fall to spring. So, was that at the program level or that kind of monitored and overall starting and endpoint for this year? Or was that at individual levels? So, that's the first part. And then, the second is on the slide under program evaluation summary, can you tell us a little more about what the internal audits look like? And, and again, just some of those factors that you use to determine those opportunities that you talked about for growth? Is it surveying a new teacher at the end of the year to see what they thought of the mentor program? Or just some of those pieces?
Do you want to speak first to the data?
Sure. Yep. So, the, the data goals are all done at the building level because it's taking a look at that kind of cohort of learners that typically are all there in the fall and typically are all there in the spring. And so, the starting point for every building is a little bit different. It's based on their, their past performance of student achievement. And what they, what they typically do then is they'll take a look at where we've been and then what do we think is an incremental amount of progress that moves us forward? And so, again, the number is all going to vary differently based on the particular buildings. Again, this year, it was so different because we were writing these goals knowing that you might have a particular grade level at a building that was missing 18% of their students in distance learning. And what we find is that, especially this spring, is that most families in distance, in distance learning are choosing not to participate in assessments whatsoever. Whether it's, you know, we offered to bring them in as part of it or to try to conduct it remotely, you know, this fall. And we just had a number of people that just, for lots of reasons, just said, we're not interested. So, it'll be curious to see how we navigate, you know, what our fall data looks like and our spring because there's significant movement in and out of distance learning. So, we'll have a number of learners that have a fall data point or a spring, but not necessarily both. And so, that's something that we'll be working with MDE on, on how we navigate what that progress looks like. So, sorry, I don't have a better answer for you on that.
No, that's helpful. Can I add to that question, to what you're saying? So, will we be able to track the data points on those students from previous years? Is there ability to do that?
Say that again.
Will we be able to track the data points from previous years? So, for example, if you have a student that doesn't have the fall and winter or the fall and spring, but has the spring and then the year before?
Yeah. So, any learner that has a data point on the NWA assessment prior to this year or this year will get a, a report mailed out here in early June.
Okay.
You know, and, and the whole thing that we'll see, right, is that it's not uncommon for some of our more mobile students to have gaps on their assessment history. We're just going to see a significant number of those now. And we have to be mindful of what does that mean as we think about programming for our learners, so.
Thanks.
And in regards to the internal audits, we have a set of questions that we ask around just kind of the fidelity of the programming, you know, are you posting the positions? How are you tracking, who participates in those things? How effective, you know, your reflection, how effective do you feel like the programming was? And then, also, we like to ask our FAPs teams, our FATP's teams, but also additional staff as well. And you questioned, you know, is there a use of surveys? And I will say, some buildings do, some don't, some vary each year how they want to collect that data. I will say, we don't have a streamlined, every building uses a certain survey. But we have done that before because it is important to get feedback from the people being served by Q Comp. You know, how effective was it and how can we get better, so?
And for the building teams, they do have a staggered, I'll say, rotation of positions. So, you've always got a number of people at the building level that have experience and have served in that role before as opposed to having potentially six people that have never served in that role.
Yeah. We're always looking to build capacity and leadership. So, we try to encourage new staff that are, these are for tenured positions. And so, we do try to encourage those folks as early as they're interested to take on that role and learn about, you know, the building structure and processes.
Madam Chair, actually, I have a question. Going back to the NWA data, so are the NWEAs and MCAs the only like metric that teachers use to go off of student and staff improvement? Because I know, like you said, a ton of people, especially in high school, I've noticed, have opted out of the state testing. So, I'm just curious, is there any other way that they measure the staff and student improvement?
Yeah. And I had to go back, I think that for the high school, they do take a look at kind of ACT metrics, not only in terms of participation, but then what that average score is for it. So, because again, you're right, at the high school level, first of all, NWA kind of scales out. And then, MCA has different levels of participation and where we do see probably our highest number of opt-outs at the high school level.
Thank you. One thing I liked what you're saying, we were talking about the peer coaches and the mentoring. And then, I also, you were kind of talking about retention there a little bit there. What, what is the time commitment for those that are serving as the peer coaches or mentors? I know it's, it's different, but similar. If you could talk about that a little bit more.
Sure. In a typical year, things looked a little different this year because we did a lot of things virtually, which timewise is more efficient, but nothing replaces person-to-person, one-to-one reflective conversations. There are three observations in a year that you would meet with your peer coach. There would be a pre-observation conversation about what the, the teacher's goals are. Then, there would be the actual collection of data, and then, there would be a post-observation conversation. Our peer coaches are trained in cognitive coaching. So, that is where, you know, again, it's not evaluative, but it's there to try to, in the conversation, prompt a person to self-reflect, ask a lot of questions of them to get their thinking going and just help them through that thinking process. That's where the growth really shows up. I would say, three hours per teacher-coach contact average. And then, a lot of our coaches have about six to seven coaches. So, they are paid a stipend, a yearly stipend for their, their time.
And I would say mentoring is definitely in excess of an hour a week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
A weekly check-in kind of a thing?
Yeah. And that's one of the common questions we'll get from prospective candidates is, you know, what does a mentoring program look like? Well, you're going to have a formal one, and then you're going to have about seven or eight informal that are there to take care of you. So, and we appreciate that about our teams and how they're set up.
And is there training for the mentors as well as part of that process?
Yes, that happens, they get their training, the day that all of our new hired staff have their day.
Okay.
While they're going through their orientation, we are training and mentor training, and then, and then they take off, so.
Are there any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
So, this is, this is great stuff. I mean, I wish in different parts of my career, there was more formal and less always informal mentoring programs. So, I imagine this is really valuable to the, to the teachers bringing them to the district. I guess a question, you mentioned the, that it's attractive to incoming teachers. I guess, that's a good question, how do you message that, the value of this and the program and the recruiting process? And what's the experience or what do you expect out of the contribution of a program like this to helping to improve diversity within our workforce?
I missed the last part of your question, Kyle.
Oh, just what's the, what's your experience or what's the expectation of how these mentoring and professional development programs contribute to our ability to attract and retrain more diversity in our staff?
So, I've hired a lot of people in this district. And one of the, the things that I get from people when they come to the interview process, because we always, the last question is, you get to interview us, right? What questions do you have? And the first question that they go to is, what is the support going to look like for me as a professional? And when, and we turn it over to the teacher team to basically answer the question. And when they, when they walk through that, not only are their teachers new to the profession, but it's really significant for teachers who have taught elsewhere and come in and who hear about that and really relish in what could have been in their previous position if they would have had something like that. And that's the thing that I feel like that I've seen in Farmington a lot is that it is not common to lose people that are here because of the support that they have. And to me, that's, you know, that's, that's the most significant thing is the amount of time and energy and money that goes into employee turnover. Is that when you can have a workforce, right, that's been around for a long time and you take a look at this district, and I think that we've got a track record of that, that's the part that's been so valuable.
I'd agree.
Did you cover your full question?
Yeah, I think for the most part, I think the only thing maybe missing was, does it help to contribute to, you know, enhancing the diversity within our workforce? I mean, that's, retaining is, retention's huge, right? I work in the corporate environment. You're right, there's a lot of attention spent on bringing new people in, but, you know, if you have high turnover, that's high cost. I imagine that equation's not a whole lot different in public education. And I know with some of the larger conversations going on in our state right now, how do we encourage more diversity in the workforce in education? And for a school or a district as remotely located as Farmington, what's the role of a program like this in helping to, again, foster that, that, that importance of bringing more diverse candidates to the district? And, and it sounds like, I mean, once we, if we can bring any candidate in, or hopefully that's the case, most candidates would find such value. And I've, we've, you know, I'm acquainted with several of the staff members. And, and one thing I do hear consistently is how awesome the culture of support amongst each other, how strong that is within the district. So, again, I get, the only part of the question is just like, how can we use this to message in and continue to use it as a tool for increasing that, that desired goal of bringing more diverse workforce together?
Excellent question. And I would just say that it probably has not had a direct correlation in the diversification of our workforce here in Farmington. We know that that's a component of multiple things that people look at when they look at the type of community I want to live in, the type of place that I want to work in. As part of a group last year, we explored what are ways that we can look to continue to try to do that? And some of the things that we've looked at actually scaled down into what types of high school programs can we offer where we have a grow-your-own approach? Where we take a look at the people that are part of our community, that live in our community, that have family members and roots in our community, and how can we promote kind of that educational pathway? And so, when we think about MINCAPS, our partnership with Prior Lake and that education component that they have, what are we doing to strategically use our own community members to try to build? use our own community members to try to build that piece of it, right? Because that would be a significant, I think, solution to when we look to fill anywhere from close to, you know, 35 to 40 positions annually in our teaching ranks, is how can we bring people and keep them as part of our community?
And I really appreciate that question as well. So they are working on the recruitment part. But I think it's also on all of us to create a climate in which we can retain teachers of color that we are able to draw here. And we're working on it, but we've got a lot to do. But retainment is the other half of that equation.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
All right, well, I appreciate your report. I appreciate hearing about how the mentoring program works and the advantages we have to having staff here and recruiting them. I've heard the legislature talk about those mentoring programs, and I'm like, well, we're doing it here. It's just nice to hear how well it is going. And I also hear, I like hearing what you've done to help in this last year and a half of the pandemic, how much planning you've done. I want to thank you as well. If everyone else has had to change how they do and teach, do everything. And I appreciate you the time and hours that you've spent with that and how you've modified and looking forward to how we can modify and reuse our time wisely in the future with this whole process. So thank you so much. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
All right, item B on our agenda is the Equity Leadership Team update. I think with Madam Dear. I'm still used to still using your French there, and I probably said it wrong, but that's just how I'm used to introducing you. Hope you don't mind.
No, no, not at all.
And fellow teammates as well, it looks like, behind you.
Indeed. There we go.
And we're back. Madam Chair and members of the board, good evening. My name is Mari Dear. I'm an Equity and Personalized Learning Coach in the Department of Teaching and Learning here and a former French teacher for about 18 years. This is my first full year in the role full-time of Equity and Personalized Learning. And we are here tonight to share with you an update from our district-level Equity Leadership Team. So all of the photos that you'll see in this particular presentation are taken from our classrooms and programs throughout the district. So you'll see pre-K 12 represented in our work here. And I should say that this is definitely not a single-person show. Our district Equity Leadership Team is made up of 12 educators from across the district. You can see them all listed here. I'm generally the point person through the Equity and Personalized Learning Coach role through the Department of Teaching and Learning. We also have Ron Williams, who is here with us tonight, the Academic and Diversity Interventionist at the high school. We have Chris Catiff with us this evening from Farmington Elementary, Kendra Catiff from Bachman Middle School. And Rick Yonker is also joining us from the District Teaching and Learning Department as a Science Specialist. The additional members of the group are folks who guide the work of the district team and are also presenters for all of our professional development throughout the year. So we're going to have a little bit of a rotating cast of characters tonight. So we'll just sort of come on in and out. And I'll let folks introduce themselves as they speak with you.
Madam Chair and board members, it's great to be here tonight. Just really an honor to share with you. I am the Science and Technology Specialist for Farmington Schools. I think this is my sixth year in the district. Wouldn't be anywhere else for anything else. I love the opportunity and the place this is as a community of learning. And I would say, as I look back on my time here, a highlight for me has been being part of the Equity Leadership Team, just the learning that I've grown in, but also been a part of. And really foundational to what we do, really the framework for what we do is our district strategic plan. And I just have to read the first couple, four lines. I was a part of a great team of people in the community and administrators and staff and others that were a part of this. And this really gets at the heart of what we do as we design and prepare to connect with staff and others as we do our Equity Leadership Team. And we believe that every person has inherent, immeasurable worth, that each person deserves respect, that communities thrive when all individuals are engaged, and that human diversity enriches both the individual and the community. And so the very foundation and bedrock of what we do connects back to the strategic plan, which guides and focuses our work in every aspect.
And so to follow along the lines of the strategic plan, I as well was part of that planning committee a couple of rounds. And it was very important that, if any of you served on that committee, the wording was very important. We had to get it exact, and it wasn't, you know, just an overall agreement. There had to be consensus, you know, agreement from everyone that that was how we would word this. And so we want to make sure that this document isn't just words, but that we are actually doing what we said our beliefs are and where our values fall. And so this team, in holding these leadership opportunities and sharing with our colleagues, we really want to work on the culture that we have as a Farmington district, a culture of empathy. We want to build those relationships and build those bridges that might be historically ones of mistrust. And we're learning more and more about that as we learn about diverse perspectives. And we want to model for each other and for our students that practice of collaboration with each other, even though we might have different ideas. And then ultimately, just showing that we value each student and that we honor who they are, their culture, their traditions. And they might be different, but they're equally valuable as our own.
So equity work is a critical component of personalization that we pride ourselves are in Farmington. And it's not an extra or an add-on. It's just part of what we do in the classroom as we work with students and their families. It's something that we just embed in what we do in the classroom on a daily basis, so. Equity work in education asks us to deeply know our learners, their strengths and their challenges. It compels us to see their race, ethnicity and culture, and to understand how those parts of their identity inform their learning. Equity work asks us to examine our own perspectives for evidence of privilege and bias. It challenges us to hear and empathize with people who are different from us. And then beyond that, when I know my students or my learners in front of me, and I've built those relationships, then it's just what I do. And it becomes part of what, how I use that to inform what happens in our classrooms, so.
I think everyone knows the kind of year that we've had. And so at the Equity Leadership Team level, as we look back on the school year 2021, our team very much recognizes the dual pandemics. There were two, right? There's COVID-19 and there is also racism. And both of those pandemics have had a significant impact on the lives of all of us, our educators, our staff, our administrators, our learners, their families. Everyone has had to make changes this year and significant ones, right? But our team also recognizes that in both of those pandemics throughout the year, our communities of color have been disproportionately impacted by both of those. So like many folks, we had to shift the way that we did business this year. And professional development was largely virtual because so many of the conversations that we usually could have were in groups that were too big to gather with COVID precautions. So the Equity Leadership Team coordinated four professional learning experiences for teachers this year, and those were spread throughout the year. All of those learning sessions have been coordinated by our 12-member district ELT team. Those are based on a couple of things. We do not use anything that is a packaged curriculum or anything like that. We base the stuff that we put together for our staff on the needs of what folks need to work on. We listen to feedback from families and learners of color when they share with us, to our LGBTQ plus learners and their families, and learners and families who are living with disabilities so that we understand how we need to be most responsive to the folks who are in our own community and what we can do to better our practice and building those relationships. So this year's focus has been supporting educators in taking anti-racist action within their role. When people see anti-racist, that's a little like, whoa, is that, is that strong? To us, it simply means being against racism where we find it. And what we mean by that is looking critically at our own actions as educators, making certain that we're responsive to students of all races, cultures and ethnicities, making sure that we are taking action in our practice. We're looking critically at our curriculum. We are looking for diverse perspectives and making sure that learners have an opportunity to do some work with what we call windows and mirrors and sliding glass doors so that our learners have the opportunity to see out into the world and experience through text or video or other ways, different ways of life from people who may look different than them or think differently than they do. It's also that idea of mirroring so that students can look at what we do in our classrooms and see themselves and their own experiences reflected back to them. And it's a sliding glass door too, so that we can be able to walk through and help kids understand how to empathize with folks whose lived experiences may be different than theirs. So those are the kinds of things that we've been supporting teachers in doing this year. We have added some additional professional learning experiences this year. So when we had our paraprofessional staff and our administrative assistants, we had folks ask, can we be part of this conversation too? And we said, yep, absolutely. And so we created some extra professional learning experiences for those folks as well to help them connect equity work to their own particular role in supporting learners and families.
So this year, Adam Fisher and I, we were presenter partners. And we did our presentations at Aiken Road and at the high school. And, you know, one of the things that we talk about is that, you know, when you think about presentations and you think about something that's kind of unidirectional, really what we do is really more conversations. And I think what we emphasize is that, you know, frankly, we're on this journey together. We're not coming as, you know, presenters that know more than you or are better in any way. We want to learn right alongside you. And there's just something really beautiful about that. And one of the themes, getting to what Mari said around interrupting prejudice and racism, was just learning how to speak up at school. And I think, you know, especially, I don't know, maybe in other states, this is true. I know people talk about Minnesota nice, but sometimes it's hard for us to say if we disagree or don't like something. And I think that there's ways to do it that really honor people and really, you know, just are done in a way that it's speaking truthfully, but it's also speaking truthfully in love. And so one of, this was so well-received as we had conversations, I think in particular, of teachers coming and interacting with us, you know, and I think at this point, it was virtual at Aiken even, but around, you know, how can we have conversations when we hear things that students share that are racist, or staff? Or how do we do it in a way that we can maintain, you know, we have a relationship. We work side-by-side with the staff every day, and we want to have community with them. And so we just gave some real practical tools of how do we, you know, what are even some words or phrases, like, this is hurtful for me, could we talk about it? And just ways to engage and have dialogue that really get at the heart of wanting to understand, but also wanting to speak what is true. And so this was just a wonderful opportunity to impart and really learn together practical skills on how to do that.
And so one progression that we've been able to move forward with are some Equity Leadership Teams at the building levels. Those kind of organically came about through the presenter team that we've had, those that worked together in some trainings that we did over the years with Carol Dr. Gupta. And I can speak for my own building at Bachman Middle School. We had a large number of folks there. And so this year, we tried, in previous years, we've done like book clubs, monthly times together to talk about, you know, maybe grading philosophies. And so this year, we did affinity groups where we surveyed staff on a number of topics, and we gave them some different titles around those topics and let them choose what they would like to engage in and learn about. The purpose of group clubs are to educate. They're not action in themselves, but they are there to educate us on maybe some perspectives that we've not been exposed to before. And we had some great conversations this year. We learned some things historically about Minnesota, becoming aware. One example would be my group decided to look at some Native American aspects of our school and our families. And learning, you know, living in Minnesota, we should know all of the tribes that exist here, that sort of thing. And then just being able to engage in learning and what we know and what we don't know, maybe some biases we had that we weren't aware of based on stereotypes. So that's just one example. We shared equity resources, found ways of maybe how can we support our students that we didn't know before, and maybe new ways that we might be able to engage with families as well.
And I can just speak to FES. And so at FES, our building team continues to grow as we get further into the year. And what we've done is kind of taken the whole group lessons that we have through the district team and kind of go a little bit further with those. We've done some reading, we've done some watching short videos and reflect. And as it came down to it, as it turned out, we decided to spend a significant amount of time on looking at books as resources that could be used as read-alouds in the classroom, both chapter books and picture books. Because as Rick said, it can be difficult to have the conversations and to get them started. And so to try to support teachers in that way and be more proactive rather than reactive, if you've already had those conversations and there's some level of comfort within the classroom, both with the teacher and the students, then it's just easier if something comes up, you've already had a base. There's some previous knowledge, things like that. So what we're finalizing soon, or not finalizing, but this first part it can be added to, is a book list that has titles, has some suggested activities, just a short synopsis of the book and levels that it can be used in. And one of the things that I look forward to hopefully in the future is also collaborating with other buildings to see what they're doing. So that if we have a great idea, we can share that, or a book list. If it turns out to be something that's useful, we can easily share that with other buildings and also learn from them of things that they're doing, so.
Good afternoon, board. Let me go on and formally introduce myself for the board members who do not know me. I know a couple of the board members, and I think they know me as well. I purposely left this blank so I can go on and give you some of my viewpoints on community outreach in our community. But let me backstep a little bit here and give you my history. I am a 22-year retired vet who served my country in two different branches, the Army and the Navy, in exemplary fashion. And I'm proud of that, okay? The other part of it is, is that once I finished that, I thought that I would be finished in life and I could sit back and drink some lemonade and call it a day. But I was drawn to education from an early age in high school. And so I went back to school and finished up the work and became an educator. I came out here and I started in the substitute. I came out here and I started in the substituting into the school systems and then got hired as a social studies teacher. I branched from that to equity, I'm sorry, academics and equity. And that's my role now. And I like that role. I like the role and what it provides for the district as a whole. My lenses are going to be different. And I want to give that perspective simply because it's important to see a balance, a counterbalance, in the work that we are trying to do here in the district. So back in the summertime, I was brainstorming with my colleague here and thinking that, hey, given the current temperature in Minnesota last summer, I thought it'd be great to start an outreach program here. For some reason, it's very difficult to get our BIPOC families to buy into what we're trying to do here in the school. They're reluctant for a myriad reasons. And so we, we kind of came up with something that would show favoritism to draw them in, okay? Because we need to get the input to hear what we can to fix these discrepancies. And so we framed it. We had to frame it. I sent out a letter to the minority families. What grade levels was it first?
We started with ninth grade.
Ninth grade.
Yep.
I put up my picture on it and my contact. Now, that was purposely done, okay? Because like things attract like objects, you know, so to speak. And I knew that that would work as an advantage to get the information that I needed. But I also framed it in this way. To start this program, we need to be, recognize who we were and what we were trying to do, number one. Number two, get to know the people who we wish to engage. Number three, be careful about the applications of best practice research. You know, cookie cutter method doesn't work for everybody, especially BIPOC families.
I'm going to pause you, Ron. Just because I'm not sure if everybody knows the acronym BIPOC. That stands for Black Indigenous People of Color. And so it's an inclusive term that recognizes the historical injustices for Black and Indigenous folks, in particular in America, but also recognizes all people of color.
Thank you, Mari.
Sure thing.
I thought everybody knew that.
That's okay.
That's a relatively new term right now.
Yep.
And that's really the politically correct way of using minorities in a school set, and we say BIPOC communities.
Yep. It's inclusive.
It is. As I finish, let me finish. I got three more of those bullet pieces. Allow communities to take ownership and change their strategies. And this was what I was framing the outreach program with. Consider principles of engagement like authenticity, innovation readiness, and collaborations with our BIPOC families. The fifth one, recruit participants by crafting and centering empowering message of community, change, and of personal development. That was huge, that piece right there, huge. And then last, but the most significant fact was building trust and relationships. And that was really the driving piece there. How do we build trust with our BIPOC families when they don't see, they're sending their learners here to learn, and they don't see too many people who look like them? How do we, how do we navigate that? Because at the end of the day, our goal is to educate every student that walks through our doors fairly. And so how do we do that? And how do we transcend that and make it conducive for that, those families to, to be warm welcoming and come in and tell their truths to make a better educational experience for their learners? Those were the goals that I set out to do, okay? And I had some more points here, but at the time, I'm not going to get into those pieces. I just wanted you guys to understand that that community outreach piece is pivotable in the work of equity. It is a must. And yes, they are a small percentage of the community, but their voices are very powerful. And I think that that needs to kind of be better more, better explored, excuse my English there, but better explored, and then really brought down and broke down to the administration staff here to see what we can do to navigate that.
So one of the things that Ron and I had, had started last summer, there was, there was a, very much last summer, a need or an express need through the community to engage in conversations around social justice, around race and racism, and understanding those things. And so Ron and I coordinated with the community education department, and we said, let's, let's run a place where we can have folks in the community come and then just have conversations and learn together about this, right? So we began in the summer with an introduction to issues of race and social justice. And then at the end of that five-week session, they told us they weren't done with us, and they said, we, we need more, and we, we want to learn more. And we said, okay. So in the fall, we ran a book study with author Iggy Omo Luos, So You Want to Talk About Race, and we dialogued about that. And then when we finished that up, I think in October, they told us, what are you doing in January? And so we ended up coming up with a spring, a spring series for them as well. So it was Seeds of Change, the Netflix edition, and that we took various things that were on Netflix, documentaries, historical films, I think. We had seen, did a couple of documentaries, even things like...
Change Bombardment was a piece.
Yep. Even things like, like food shows, you know, documentaries about food and such, that just brought up some really natural conversations and learning with folks in the community. And those were really well-attended. And it was funny, because we had the introduction group, and then they each brought a friend to the next one, and then they each brought a friend to the next one. And so it's been growing, that community education partnership, which is really pretty cool. So for folks who are interested in joining the conversation, that's an option through community ed. I'll speak a little bit to my personal work here in the Department of Teaching and Learning. Carrie Betton, who is the district literacy coordinator, and I share an office, and it was a natural conversation that we had that generated this idea of how do equity and literacy combine? And there are a lot of really natural fits there. And so Carrie and I settled on helping folks to select diverse texts, so that again, they have that opportunity to see out to different perspectives. They have an opportunity to see themselves reflected in the texts that we use, and that also they have that sliding glass door of developing empathy and understanding for folks with different lived experiences. So initially, Carrie and I thought that that was going to be a small project, and that has grown to include guidance and coaching for teachers across the district pre-K-12 on selecting diverse texts for learners. And those presentations are then tailored for elementary and secondary educators, because we know those needs are different. And then what Carrie and I have been doing is following up at each building and being on-site for extended conversation with groups of folks about different stories that they're using, different resources we can help them find, how to have conversations with learners in age-appropriate ways, all of those kinds of things. And then this is where we're headed next. Within the next week, we will have a district equity leadership team meeting to determine some vision and some next steps for our group. Ron and I will be facilitating Seeds of Change Call to Action Group in summer 2021. And then in the fall, we'll do two rounds of professional development for staff, one during workshop week and one during October 15th. We will also host a Seeds of Change book study group. And then winter is planned for that February 15th professional development for staff. So we've got those already blocked out a bit, and we'll make some choices about the direction that we need to head with folks. The ongoing work that happens through my role, through Ron's role, and through the roles of our district equity team leaders and the building teams, is to continue to build capacity for folks to engage in conversations around the work with teacher and staff support. One-on-one and small group coaching is always available for me. That is usually opt-in. Folks will contact me, and I will say that the calendar has been pretty full. Community and family outreach will continue through Ron's work and also through our collective work with Seeds of Change and Community Ed. The building-level ELT activities will continue, but I think we're also looking to leverage some of those collaborative partnerships and talk, have buildings be able to talk with each other about what's been effective. And then Carrie and I will continue to provide that equity literacy support as an ongoing piece as well. So one of the things that we thought might be powerful for you all to see, you know, we talked early on about how equity work connects directly to the strategic plan and how we want that to be something that is lived for us, not just words on paper. So we visited all the buildings. And what we would invite you to see in this video is how those equity components of our strategic plan are living in the public spaces of the schools and programs throughout the district. So we'll share that with you. So we'll say that that's, that's a snapshot.
That's a snapshot.
That's a snapshot. It's, it's not everything. It's not all the things. These are steps in, in the direction that we want to go to having a welcoming, inclusive space where each and every person that comes through the doors of our district is seen and valued and honored and loved and appreciated for exactly who they are. So thank you to all of you for having us here to present an update. And we are always interested in continued dialogue, so we'll take your questions at this time or your comments or feedback.
First of all, thank you for all the work you guys did. Ron, it doesn't go unnoticed, all the outreach stuff, I will tell you that.
Thank you so much.
Couple of questions I have is, is kind of the new buzzword now is, the category I fit in is white privileged, okay? Which I take offense to, because I'm actually Italian-Irish. So my grandparents were migrated immigrants. So I don't fall into really any category. So how are we educating our kids? I mean, all our kids are from different backgrounds, and they're all from immigrant families and different ethnic backgrounds. How are we making sure we hit all of them so they can understand more of the broader culture that racism is not just because of the color of your skin, but it's also because of your ethnic background as well?
So I think there are lots of conversations that are happening at different levels. Part of that work is the work of the building leadership team and building capacity for the, our, our teachers at each building level to have those conversations, because that will look really different at a kindergarten level than it will at like a junior and high school level.
Sure.
Right? So part of that is, part of that is the learning about privilege in general, and that it may, it may mean that it's not, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't negate all of the ways that folks have had to work hard at all. It does not negate the fact that some folks have lived through hardship. It just means that for many of us, and especially for myself, I count myself in this category, as a white person, my, my skin color did not prevent me from doing anything, where I know that that has been the case for Ron. So it's just that acknowledgement of lived experience that is different. And I think what we try to do in age-appropriate ways with kids is to help them see difference and to understand and celebrate difference, and to have it not be something that is weird or other, but something that is cool, and something that is unique, and something that is special, and understanding the pride in your own family culture and the pride in your own, you know, if you have, have had, you know, a particular heritage that you know about and celebrate and continue to honor those traditions. Those are the kinds of things that we're interested in understanding about each and every one of our learners.
And believe me, just let me put a caveat on to what she said. When I'm talking to the learners, the learners will tell you about their cultures if you're listening. And, and that is a huge piece of understanding where they fit in the puzzle of here in this United States, or even in the school system. So my ear is very close to the cultural aspect of it and understanding that, so I can embrace their culture, recognize their names properly, or read their names properly, acknowledge their foods and that. And that gives them a lot of self-worth, and that kind of breaks down that piece of unity. When they feel included, then that is acceptance, if that makes any sense.
And to me, the part of the education that I think, I know some buildings have taken it away is when it's holidays. Some, some schools are okay with wearing Santa Claus shirts when other schools are not, which personally I take offense to that because I like learning about other people's cultures. I encourage kids to wear whatever they like within reason. I'll say that right now. But I want to learn about, you know, what do they celebrate at home? Instead of us taking something away from people, you know, let's, let's educate everybody. But it seems like sometimes we, we take that away. Some schools, we can have Christmas trees, some we can't. Some we can have, wear Santa shirts or religious shirts. That's another thing that fascinates me. When I hire somebody at my work from a different culture, I love talking, just let me hear where you came from. What about your religion? What about your, your food? We have a food day where different cultures come in and create their own food. But I think educating the kids instead of taking stuff away kind of hurts us a little bit.
And I would agree. I think that for us, the focus has not been necessarily on, on taking, but finding that balance, right? Because for us to acknowledge and honor, I mean, how many languages and cultures we have in the district, right? Now, we may not be able to hit every single one. Part of the equity work that we're doing is looking at how, how do the populations that we have in the district, how do their lived experiences, their cultures play into how they show up here and become part of the fabric of, of our school communities? So, I think there's balance to be had and there's dialogue to be had about that. I think for so long, there have been, there have been traditions. And I think what we're coming to now is the understanding of how does, how does the, the tradition of a majority of folks fit into this broader picture of all of our celebrations? So, for me, I get real curious about like different cultural celebrations like you talked to, or you talked about. I get real curious about how do people, how do people show generosity and gratitude? What's the bigger picture around a holiday, you know, for, for any particular thing? If it's, if it's a celebration of a particular person, what do we do to honor them? In some cultures, it's a song that they sing about your name. In some cultures, it's a gift. In some cultures, it's special foods. So, I get real curious and I think this is kind of where we're looking at helping teachers to go is not just a particular holiday, but big picture umbrella. What are the important ways that we celebrate ourselves, right, and our families?
And given, not only, given a platform in which to do it, the learners to do it, you know? And dance was another one that they do a lot of. And like, why are you dancing? Well, that's what we do. You know, here's the key word, that's what we do. And so, I want to know what the "we" is to be, so I can serve you better in your educational journey in school. And if we are reaching that, of course, we're going to get our educators to buy in because we're buying into them and in turn, they're going to buy back into us. And that's, that's the driving train, to answer your question, that I really work on, is how to build those relationships with our BIPOC students in which they can go in and navigate a world that's really marginalized them for a long time. How do we get that train on the right track, you know? And as you can see, you can see the work that we are doing. Are we where we need to be? Absolutely not. But we are so much further than we were 10 years ago, you know, in the district. And so, we continue to work with improvement each day as doing the work.
Well, you're doing a great job. I mean, it's not an easy topic to talk about. I will tell you.
No.
You make it easy. I mean, and I commend all of you for doing that. I mean, I think that's, we got to talk more about it. You brought up about Native American tribes. You brought me back to my elementary days back in New York where I grew up in upstate New York and we were Arocoi country, on Susquehanna, where we actually could go in our garden and find Indian marbles and arrowheads. And we would have descendants of the Arocoi nation come in and speak and learn about the tribes and stuff like that, which was amazing. And I assumed again that we still do that in schools.
And I think that's part of the greater bridging between the community that, that we can do, right? I mean, post-COVID, when we're all able to be, you know, have folks in our spaces. But folks have even actually been able to bridge that with some virtual visits, which has been really cool. So, I see that as a much bigger leverage of who are the folks in our community that we can rely on as, as experts of their particular culture? And how can we give them the platform to be able to, to be heard and share that and for that to be honored and celebrated as, as part of the, the empathetic culture, you know, and the, the value on, on each person that we're placing here?
Well, great work. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. I love it when you guys come. I get really excited because all the committees that come here are important. But see now, I'm going to get teary because this is so great. I have never cried during a board meeting. I just want to say that. Yeah, here we go. You know, it's, you're shaping the minds for kids to go out into the world. And it's starting here. And I hope you know how incredible that is. So, thank you for everything. Ron, thank you for your service. I had no idea what your background was. I am grateful that you followed your heart into education, so you're here today helping our children. Marnie, great job on, you know, taking this on. And for everybody who works on this, this team, great job. So, I hope that as a community, we can start seeing more communication from you guys, seeing what you're doing. That video was fantastic. It was amazing. And I hope we share that with our community and for all of the, the parents in our district. I think that is, you know, I don't think people understand what you're doing and the impact it's going to have on their children as they grow and become adults. And I also think that it's crucial for parents to also follow through with this at home. Because, you know, it's just like with schoolwork, you know, if you don't help them at home and help them learn and, and develop, you know, teachers sometimes can talk to them all that they want. So, I would love to see just a little bit more communication just on some follow-up that maybe parents could do at home. My son is really good about communicating his excitement when he learns new things. So, I've heard about all the different religions he's learned about. And he's actually went to a couple people in our community and said, can I celebrate Hanukkah with you? I mean, you know, that's really cool. I have family that is Jewish and celebrate Hanukkah. And so, I was really excited for him to have that excitement. And truthfully, it, it came from the district. And not that we didn't talk about it at home, but it's just nicer for him to have that extra information, learning it from school. So, keep up the amazing job. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I will say to your point that, that the philosophy that we have is very much that, you know, families, families are in charge, right? Families, families' values, families' beliefs are going to be what they hear. And, and our role as educators is to be able to say, not this is what to think, right? It's never that.
Right.
But it's, here's how to think critically. Here are many different pieces to the puzzle. How do you think they go together, right? Here's, here's what's going on, you know? And let's talk about how we, how we navigate things together as a community so that they're able to have those, those conversations and so that when they grow to be adults, that these aren't uncomfortable things, right? And, and of course, you know, what they hear at school and what they take in, I know, comes home and folks have, have, are absolutely, you know, able to have those conversations and, and, you know, parents are always in the driver's seat about that. But I think, you know, the, what we try to do is say that there's going to be a big world outside of Farmington. And even within Farmington, there are lots of folks who have different lived experiences than you do. There are folks who look differently than you do. There are folks who, whose faith communities are different. There are folks whose heritage is different, right? The foods on their table are different. And that's all okay because there's enough space for everybody.
Yeah. And it was, Steve had mentioned the food aspect of it too. I thought that's a great key, you know, component too, is I remember growing up and going to a camp and they had all these different foods from all these different countries. And I still, to this day, I must have been nine, and I still remember that day, sitting in there because they had the American table. They had all these hot dogs and hamburgers and french fries. And I can't remember what country I got, but we got beans, you know? And so, just learning about this is a normal dinner for some, you know, for a family and just seeing what everybody had and going, wow, it's really great to, you know, the Americans, boy, they left really, really full. You know, and knowing that some cultures, the children don't always get full. And just knowing that aspect too, of the different foods and learning that too, you know, it'd be great to, to maybe have a celebration food day or something, you know? I don't know. More education on that as well because, you know?
You know, to be fair to your point, when you're talking about food, I'm always using food as a common denominator. And it really is, you think about it. We celebrate Sunday dinner with, with food. We, we marriages, baby shower, whatever, we celebrate with food.
Brings folks together.
So, food, it brings people together. So, that's one of the things that we use with our students, especially in the diversity club when we, you know, post or pre-COVID-19, is that we allow them to bring in their cultural differences and their foods.
Oh, cool.
And let people experience it. And let me tell you what, things that I've never seen before. I was like, let me try this. And it was delicious. It may not have looked that way, but it tastes delicious. And, and they got such a big kick out of eating different. We had, how many races in there or cultures? About 10 or 15?
It was, yeah, easily.
So, you had that, a Smugglers Board of World Food right at 12:01. So, and it, and it really went well. And then it was our end of the year celebration for the kiddos and we allowed them to do that. Of course, they had to clean up after themselves. But, but that, that, back to your point, it is extremely important when you recognize these cultural differences and bring them to the forefront because those kids were so happy, they were trying to get everybody to try their dish, you know? So.
I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, makes an impact.
It really, really does. So, stuff like that, I wish maybe the community or the parents could hear maybe just a little bit more of because I think that will have just such an incredible impact as well on, on what we're doing, you know? No wonder why our communities are growing so much. I mean, people are going to be, be dying to get into the district, you know, once I think people really have an understanding of what we're doing. Because I tell people all the time, we're doing this, we've got diversity that, you know, we've got this going on with our teachers and this is how we educate our teachers and all the different learning practices. And people are like, what? I mean, half the time, they don't believe me, I'll be honest with you. They think of, you know, all your, it's like, no, this is what Farmington is doing. And we're in such a great position right now and it's thanks to your work and the work of the leaders of the districts and the other committees. So, thank you. I don't want to take up more time. I could talk about this all night. I think you guys are doing a great job, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions.
You go.
Thanks, Marnie and Ron. It's so nice to meet you and the whole team. Really great to put faces with names. And thanks for the presentation tonight. My first question is really around, I think, one of the things that I really appreciate as a parent of young children is that the person I was six years ago when my first was born is not who I am now thanks to the, the emotional labor of our BIPOC communities the last few years. I think when my kids were first born, I, like many people, thought that colorblindness was the right thing to do or the best way to approach parenting with our children. And it's only through the work that's been done that has helped me learn a better way and, and how I can support diversity, equity and inclusion efforts in my community and my professional workplace and especially at home with my kids. Two of the pieces that really, besides resources that have been shared about how to talk to young children about that, but that helped me personally was trainings that I attended and implicit bias and really being able to start to understand that implicit bias lives in all of us and being able to work through letting your own defenses down. If you have a brain, you have implicit bias. And so, being open to exploring what yours are and how those might be manifesting in your behaviors or your interactions in intentional or unintentional ways in the workplace or in the community was really helpful. And then the second piece that I benefited from was working through the intercultural development inventory and, you know, having something tangible to understand kind of where you stood as a person and how some of the actions like you guys have described can move you along to build your competency in those areas. So, my first question is around those two pieces. Implicit bias or intercultural development inventory work, has that been available to, as part of your work, to staff, teachers and other staff in the district or?
I'll let her answer first, but I got, I got a piece of what you said on, especially implicit bias.
Yes. Answer is yes. Especially in our more recent trainings, we have come back to implicit bias and we have talked about exactly what you addressed. Because those are things that as, as educators, we may not know that we carry into a classroom. We even talk about two different brain systems. The one that, that makes a quick snap judgment based on the messages that are, are in, in your brain from ages ago. And the one that makes more conscious, focused, thoughtful decisions. And that's kind of where the, you know, when the snap judgment comes in, that's where some of that bias can live. And the idea that we retrain our brains to think about, hang on, am I making a judgment about this person before I even know them or get to understand them? And, and what that can do in an educational position of power? So, we've talked about those things with our staff that may make another appearance as we are working with folks. The IDI or the intercultural competency or the continuum, the development continuum, that's work that's been done at our equity leadership team level and the administrative level. When we started working, I believe about 2017, Carol Gupton, Dr. Carol Gupton, came in as an outside consultant and worked with us. And the members of that team, so administrators and teacher leaders throughout the district, did take the IDI. It's a test that you can take to find out where you stand on the, the cultural competency continuum. So, we did that and then each person debriefed and then we talked about where the group was as a whole. I don't believe we've revisited that. It would be interesting, I think, for a lot of folks to do that. However, I am trained as a licensed IDI administrator. So, that can be an option for folks who are looking, that can be an opt-in piece that if folks are interested in knowing where they stand and then using that as a development, we can do that for professional development.
I took that IDI. And I looked at, at the IDI and it was really, it wasn't really a game changer for me because I scored fairly well on it. I was, you know, because my lenses are different. And so, I did learn some things about myself. But let me go back to the implicit bias. When we're talking about that as an ELT team and in our trainings with educators, it is the why to the bias. Why am I thinking this way? And so, we get them to start to unpack the why, you know? Because once you start to unpack it, you start to see, and then we give real-world examples, you know? We're not going to share them now, but she and I may use one that, that is contradictory to one another if you start to look at just the problem based just on race. She's going to see it one way, I'm going to see it another way. And then we explore that and get some commonality. This is what equity work is, exploring, doing the undifficult work, or I'm sorry, the most difficult work, doing it. It's not easy, you know? But in that, that, that pain and that, that shifting, you learn. You learn. And I always like to say, we use, everybody's on a different spectrum. No two people look at equity the same. Some people are high on their spectrum and some people are lower. So, that's what the self-work is, which includes that, those two terms that you talked about.
Thank you. And then my, my second question, I have just two more. My second one is, I touched on the emotional labor piece and what goes into doing this work. Is there a cultural affinity group for staff and/or students as part of our equity efforts in the district?
There is for students.
There's some for staff as well that just was created, incidentally, to start, when is it starting next, coming up? Where staff can, can get together and dialogue what you just said as educators. It's a free space to kind of get that process out because of the emotional labor in it. This work is emotionally intense. This work is emotionally intensive, you know, and we've been doing it for a while, you know? And so we check in with each other, make sure that we are balanced in doing the work. It's extremely important, uh, because it can get draining to be what you're saying. But the joy out of it is seeing the changes, however subtle they are.
And then my last question, thank you, is, you talked, you talked about how important it is for our families to be informing your work through the community outreach, and I, I couldn't agree more. When I was at the Department of Health, one of the things that really, you know, fascinated me was how equity was at the top of the goals every year, and that the measures actually got worse, the outcomes got worse for Black mothers dying in childbirth, and the outcomes got worse for, um, you know, immunization rates in young children. And so I think, um, when we start asking the right questions of how do we do this work from our communities instead of a top-down approach, that is so important. But you talked about building trust with ours in Farmington, and I'm wondering, um, as you're, as, how right now would you describe our families that are, that are involved in this effort? How would they feel about the feedback that they're getting from, from seeing the work happen, I guess, in practice? Is there room to grow as far as, um, you know, they're putting in the time, they're, they're giving their feedback? Are they seeing the results of that, I guess, and what more can we do?
I'm gonna say, honestly, answer your question, yes and no. Um, families of color or BIPOC families are reluctant to a degree to physically come in. There's a language barrier sometimes, uh, the cultural differences are starched, different. Um, their kiddos or their learners are telling what they're experiencing in their classes, and that's transcending back to the families. Um, and so there's a reluctance of something. Now let me, let me backdate a little bit here. At the beginning of the school year, I sent out a flyer to minority families, to just minority families, to find out if we can bridge this divide. And I was very, very structured, and, and I can show this, the letter if you guys want to see it. Um, very concise in, in the talking points, and I got, hmm, six or seven replies back, out of the, how many, about, about 200?
Oh, you must have sent about 120, 100, I think you sent a mountain batches of 100.
About 200.
So that tells me that, that maybe work constraints, um, some families may have
moved, certain families set it to the side, uh, because of the, the, just the continuum that has been happening in, in equity work, let me say it that way. And so we had to really be creative in how do we reach these families on their terms. And that's why that outreach program is extremely important, where you can actually meet the family on their terms. And I think that that's a win-win situation, because once you do that, then you can get, extrapolate the data that you need to bring back, and then improve the relationship in the community with these, these BIPOC families. So that's work that's still being, going on as well, teamed up with Mari and, and the ELT team as well.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited for the seeds of change to continue. I know quite a few people that were interested last year, and because of the pandemic and nerves around everything that was going on, didn't participate at that time, but really excited for this year. Thanks.
Great question.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I do think this is really great work. It's important for, for the community and for education system as a whole. Um, I just have kind of a basic question, and, and you said, are we where we were? No. Are we where we want to be? Not yet, right? So my question is really basically, what does success look like? You know, when you think about the impact, how do you know that we're having, uh, having a positive impact, um, on all students in, in Farmington, but particularly those BIPOC students? Um, do we know, uh, where the achievement gaps are and, and kind of, I'm not, I don't know, I'm a new board member, so I don't know what you all know. Um, so, but that to me is a, a good place to start. And my other comment was, you got a 6% response on a direct mailer, that's like in marketing terms, really good. But I do come back to that kind of base question, it's like, how do you, what does success look like to you, and, and how do you know that all this great work is having the type of impact that you want to have?
I'm, I'm, we're gonna dissect your question a little bit, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna answer a part of your question, how do I know if, if the community is responding to what we're asking them to do? Is that, is that paraphrasing your question somewhat?
Well, I think about like, objectives, what are we trying to accomplish? You said, are we where we were? No. Or where we want to be? So where's that where we want to be? What do we know what that looks like? And how do we know we're advancing in the right direction at the velocity that, that's impactful?
The sign for me personally is the learners. The learners will tell you everything you need to know in this work. The learners will tell you, their grades will tell you, their attitudes will tell you, their smiles will tell you. These are the things that I measure to see if that's the case, because that self-worth is built because they're being respected as an individual. That is the caveat that I use as my personal measure. Now, there are some, some other things we can go on and extrapolate out of that, but the, the end of the day is, are they performing well in school? Do they feel centered in school? And how can we keep that process moving forward? So that's the first part of what we do.
Are we seeing that in like NWEAs or MCAs, or how do you really know?
Well, and that's the hard part about equity. That's the really hard part about equity, because equity doesn't always show up in an easy checklist. We, we talk with this about our, or talk, that can be part of the frustration with our staff too, and even in, in leadership, right? That's, that's been hard for me to learn as a person who leads this work. Um, the last agreement that we have in our, in our norms for any of the meetings that we lead are accept and expect a non-closure. Um, Ron can tell you what that looks like, right? But that is harder to quantify in a number, right? The self-worth that somebody feels, that's hard to, that's hard, hard to quantify in a number. That's hard to, it's hard to get NWEA data that says a kid feels comfortable in, in a classroom with a teacher. And those are the kinds of things that our work touches. Um, is it about the grades? Is it about how well they're performing? Is it about their skills and abilities? Absolutely. Um, and I think probably Chris and Lisa could talk to you about that specifically, and we'll call them in to share if, if you'd like. Um, but I think that's the hard part about accepting equity work, is that it doesn't necessarily say, you know, we're at 50% of our kids feeling awesome about being in Farmington, and we're going to get to 75 next year. Like, it, it, it's so hard that that doesn't, that doesn't walk out in a neat data point. Um, and I think when I look at it, I look at it in terms of story. Um, Ron might not tell you this, but every day upstairs in his office, he has a stream of kids coming in. And if you open the door, five kids will follow behind you. Why? Because he supports them, and, and they feel comfortable in that space. They know that he's going to hold them accountable for doing their schoolwork. They know though that he's gonna, he's going to provide a relaxed atmosphere where they know that they fit in and they belong. And they don't necessarily have that. So one of the measures for me is, you know, I've got less of a job, and Ron's got less of a job, because we've built capacity in all of our staff to be those people for kids, um, that everybody is comfortable having those conversations, and everybody is willing to engage in that work, um, and, and make this a part of their practice.
Madam dear, one huge win that I actually witnessed is when they had the student walkout to high school. Controlled environment, the kids did a phenomenal job. I mean, I saw your interaction, Ron, I mean, it couldn't have went any better. The kids got to speak. I, I, I mean, it was like a non-event. When you hear of a walkout, you think a disruption. I mean, it was phenomenal.
Yeah.
And that's kudos to you guys on how that was handled though.
It was beautiful, it was a beautiful thing, it really was.
Um, and what, what is so cool is that they understand what it is to lead that way. And they are, we are seeing greater comfort in, in their abilities to talk about hard things, um, where we know that that's harder as adults, right? The more, the more baggage we drag around with us, the more history we have to, to learn or unlearn. Um, and that's.
I was, you know, to be fair to your point, I was extremely proud of our kiddos, and it was a rainbow of students out there.
Yeah.
And they had created their little signs, and, and we had, there was no teacher involvement whatsoever. We just, you know, was making sure everything was okay from a distance. And they self-advocated, they, they did their, whatever they did, and it was beautiful with zero incident, zero. I want to be very specific in that. And that's a testament of how well equity is embracing our students here in this school.
So should, um, we ask Lisa and Chris to maybe speak to some of the data points? Because some of those are above my, above my, above my space.
I mean, I realize that I'm asking a tangible question to an intangible set of measures, I guess. I do get it. I do get it, but you know, it's, it's, it comes from the right place. I mean, at the end of the day, I want to know, do you feel you have the resources and support?
Right.
Are we doing the right things? How, and, and from your lens, I just don't have your background, so how do you think about?
How do we know?
How do I know when I get done on, done with the year, that I had the impact that I set out to achieve? And I, I understand that for like.
To be fair to your point, I was gonna let Chris and I go, but what, what Mari and I do each and every meeting, I don't care where we are in the country or together, we have what I call an after-action report. She and I will brainstorm and went down, and go down and check what we said and what we did to make sure that we gave our very best. We do that each and every meeting. We've had, I would imagine, a hundred different scenarios and meetings and, and police, police work, and I work on a police panel as well. Um, and so we do these things to make sure that we are validating the work, and making sure we're giving the best of what we have to the work. Because at the end of the day, like I said before, our goal is to make sure that every student that walks through these doors in our district are treated fairly in the educational process. So that's the, that's the bottom line of what it is and keeps us focused in the work.
We'll invite Chris and Lisa to share as well, if they've got some insight on that question.
Well, thanks to the ELT for that wonderful presentation this evening, and we talk a lot about the, the qualitative aspects of this too, right? One of the things that we've implemented this year for the first time is some quantitative measures, right? And so we, we've used Panorama, um, as our student survey instrument, and we've done this, well, we did it this fall, and we've done a couple of other implementations at the high school level before. But one of our really strategic actions this summer was to deploy a student survey in grade six through 12 around equity and inclusion. Um, and one of the things that we took a little bit of a risk on is when you ask, you know, 3,000 learners some questions, is you can choose to use kind of standard canned questions, um, that have defined responses, which we did, um, and/or you can also add some open-ended free response. And we felt so, we felt that this was such a prime opportunity to hear from the learners in our system about their vantage point. Because as Ron talked about, right, I mean, you talked about the response rate of, you know, 150 to 200 mailers, um, we've got access to people right here who can tell us about that experience in live terms. And just a couple of things, and this can be for a future sharing too, but a couple of the questions that we'd asked, um, we had 2,000, roughly 2,800 responses from students in grade six through 12. And one of the questions, um, was that students at your school treat people from a different race fairly. And from their perspective, they had 81%. And people might heal it 80%, wow, that's pretty good. Except for the fact that we've got about 560 students that said that was unfavorable in their perspective, right? And so that's important to flesh out what that means. When they asked the same question about students at your, uh, teachers at your school treat your, treat people from a different race fairly, it was 89% favorable. But again, we're still looking at the fact that we've got 280 learners that had an impact, that had an experience where they felt that that was unfavorable based on that question. Um, other powerful questions that came out is, uh, we asked three open-ended questions. Um, what is it that the school is currently doing that's making a difference? What could the school, school start to do to make a difference? Because the start piece was what we're not doing, right? Which we can't see necessarily through our own practices and our policies and our lenses and stuff, right? And one of the, uh, the question was, how confident are you that students can have an honest conversation with each other about race? And that was at 45% favorable. And one of the responses as to what we could do different around there, um, which was really powerful to me, is that racism should not be treated like taboo, right?
What, what did you say?
Racism should not be treated like taboo, something that's taboo. And when we talk about our ability, and I go back to the question earlier about employee recruitment and retention, right, and what's that powerful piece, is the work that we're doing with our learners on a day-to-day basis, right, where we feel like it's an inclusive environment, and one where we don't shy away from things that can be difficult, things that maybe we're uncomfortable with. That's the type of environment where people feel like, I want to be a part of that, because that's something that's strong, or that's something that resonates with me. Um, so those are some of the, just the basic questions that we'd asked, and, you know, when we think about those three questions that we'd asked, we got 2,800 responses for each one of them. You know, from a survey standpoint, it's almost one of the things that you're not supposed to do, because it's so hard to get through that level of data. But we felt that that was something on an annual basis that we're going to continue to go back to for our learners, because that can drive, um, a lot of this work too that we're doing.
You said this was the first you, you fielded that survey?
It was.
That's awesome, yeah, no, that, that gets, that gets directed to the question I asked, about how you know you're going to have an impact. That, that, it's, uh, it's hard to get the numbers and through grades, I get that. But I mean, that, that, you know, at, at work, we have a employee engagement survey, and it asks a lot of those same types of questions about, you know, do you feel comfortable to be yourself at work? I don't know what the answers are, because I haven't seen the results of it, but, um, but those are the, they're, they're aligned with that idea. And, you know, the goal is, over time, are there some things that we all can be doing differently to move the needle, right? Um, yes, that's great. I'm, I'm excited to hear about that.
And one of the things, and we'll, this has been a long presentation for you, but one of the things that we talked about, right, is that oftentimes when we think about administering a survey, well, how do we do it in a school? We do it in a, in a classroom with the teacher, right, and they've got control over that environment.
Yeah.
How would this survey look different if these learners got to take it with their family?
Your response rate would be a lot lower.
Right? Would they have, would they have a greater opportunity, right, through a family lens to interpret, what is this question asking me, and how do I respond to it?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Well, and Chris and I have heard multiple members of the administration team talk about the diversification, as Kyle talked to, of our workforce, and how representation matters and is important to us as a district, and some of the innovative things that our district is doing to try and recruit more BIPOC educators, staff, um, throughout our schools. So I, I think those are really cool too, and I don't think they were touched on, but that's another tangible measure that we can see progress over time of how our, our workforce is diversifying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
There's, I, you know, I put some notes, it's been a long presentation, I have a couple of other questions, but I'll, I'll send those through email, I'd just like to hear back. There's just one other question I wanted to ask while the entire team is here. You mentioned about, this past year, your focus was on anti-racism, if I remember correctly. Do you have a theme or focus for kind of that next year? I know each year you've had a theme. What is your theme for next year, if you have it, or what are you considering at this time?
I would say that, um, that usually takes place in the spring, deciding that. And the other thing that we've tried not to do is decide too far in advance, because things are happening in our community all the time, and we want to be responsive to those needs and responsive to what we hear organically from families and learners that we need to work on. Um, one of the messages that we heard from them was that we needed to work on, um, teachers and staff being able to speak up when they saw prejudice and stereotypes or racism or bias in conversations in different spaces in the school community. And so that was the reason for the focus on the speak-up at school, professional development, that just gave folks some tools and some conversational guidance about, how, how do we interrupt that when we hear somebody talking about stereotypes? And how can we help to frame that as an educational, not as a like, nope, we don't talk about that here, or shutting it down, but more of a, you know, tell me more about that, where that came from, and do you understand what that word means and why it's hurtful to folks? And so that was, that was part of this year. So I would say, we'd be happy to report back on that one. The team will be working on that, um, this Wednesday, we have a meeting to vision for the plans and vision work for next year. This Wednesday, we have a meeting to vision for the plans and vision work for next year and also through the summer. So we'd be happy to reconnect with you about what we decide on.
And that'd be great. I know just as things come, there are sometimes issues will come to the board that maybe communication went out that we weren't aware of. And then there's, there's a change or something that goes on like what, Steve is mentioned holidays and things like that, where sometimes things come to us after the fact and we're not as aware. And just kind of having that, you know, just to work through the superintendent and staff so we can be abreast of what's going on. And kind of know of things before the fact. And that's, you know, things happen, you know, no criticism to that. But just the more we know and more informed of what's going on. And to that point, can, if possible, can the board be aware of the trainings and be allowed to attend? Or know when they're at if they want to participate or observe?
Absolutely.
So yeah, just kind of keep us.
As far as I'm concerned, yeah.
Yeah, keep, keep us abreast of issues and let us know what's going on. Because I think, I think other board members might be interested in that process as well if our time permits. So information is always helpful for everyone to understand. So I appreciate what you presented and I do have additional questions, but for the sake of time, I'll send them through email later.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Nice, robust discussion. I mean, we only have one meeting this month, so we're making use of our time, I think, really well. All right. The next update is item C, community service update, survey update with Director Baldwin. And he's known for speaking very quickly, so, you know, buckle up.
Thank you, Chair Saucer, members of the board. My name is Andrew Baldwin, I serve as Director of Instructional Technology. And I'm here to share with you just a brief update that we are once again contracting with the Morse Leatherman Company for our 2021 community satisfaction or residential survey. So beginning this a month already, they've started phone interviews in a scientific random sampling of 400 household communities in IST 192. So that involves both families that have children in our system or have been through our system as well as those who are in attendance in the school boundary area. You know, we, as you're aware, if you've been on the board a while, things like that, we've been running this about every couple of years. And so we recognize that there is value in the longitudinal data. And so for that reason, we've kept the question set very similar to years past. However, that being said, we recognize context matters. And certainly in the midst of a pandemic, there may be some influences in terms of some of that data. And so we did add some question sets specifically related to our COVID-19 precautions as well as some things on internet access. And then again, I think, which has been a theme in tonight's conversations, is also around communication. And so we have some things about, you know, have you accessed some things, you know, on our website? You know, that significant information from the district. So this survey, again, much as we were talking about surveys here, is an opportunity for us to find out information from our larger community in terms of how are we doing? You know, what kind, what's your perception? Do we, are we communicating what we think we're communicating? And how are we doing our jobs from that standpoint? The survey is anticipated to be completed here in June, at which point in time, similar to previous opportunities we've had this, we'll probably have coordinated time where we can have Peter Leatherman in to do a summary of results again to the board. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Yes, go ahead.
Andrew, can you remind me, do we, you said that we try to call like 400 homes. Do we continue to call until we get 400 responses? Or are we just, that's just a random sample and we get what we get out of them?
Yeah, so as a scientific dataset, we want it based on that 400 mark. And so Peter will come in here and again, he'll share what his non-response rate is. Again, it's a blind survey that he does in terms of those outreach and those communication. Meaning he, he will know like by phone number. And so, but, and then, and then the data on that point, he gets to that point of, of trying to get that, that realm of, in the past, historically, he's had a plus or minus 5%, you know, margin error on those things. So he, he has, he's made repeated calls. And as he shared in the past, you know, some of these interviews, the advantage of doing an interview, it's largely some open-ended questions. And then based upon that response, it dictates, you know, what the follow-up is on those. But historically in the past, those interviews in and of themselves can be better than 20 minutes in length.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I've actually got three comments or questions about specific questions. I don't know that this is the most productive place to ask them. I mean, let me know if you want, I'll ask them, but should I just email them to you? Or is there a better way to get up to it?
You can, I mean, if I don't have the answer, my, my answer is we can reach out to Peter on the, on the results of them. But I'm, I'm open to field as best as can, it's up to you.
All right, I mean, what are.
I think, I think, I think a discussion off-board, Chris, specific questions make more sense, especially since this is an open meeting and people could get the questions in form of response from that question. That's my personal thought, I mean.
Well, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and have that conversation offline, not to tell you to not ask a question, but I think that would make more sense.
No, yeah, they're, they're specific to what, how the questions are framed and, and structured. And so, and the answers back too. So let me just, I'll email them to you and we can have an offline conversation.
And then, and just again FYI, a lot of these are based on a question set of that longitudinal data on these. And that some of these data sets, based, based upon the origins, we've got data and variations of this that go back to, I think, some of the earliest things even prior to Morse Leatherman Company. It's back to 2012.
Sure. Yeah. I noticed some things like where do you get information changed? As some of the prior sources don't exist anymore.
Correct, yep, that's true.
MySpace.
Yeah, I agree with Kyle, like number 72 says, "School Board Meetings Broadcast on Cable Television." I don't think that's an option anymore. So I, I would be concerned about presenting an option for information to respondents that isn't current. So maybe that, something like that should be updated to School Board Meetings Broadcast on YouTube or on the internet because cable versus access to internet would have a really different response. Because those were only broadcast through cable when you were meeting at City Hall, right? They're not now.
I don't think we're, but I think, I think the replays are. But just in terms, from what I've seen, and the question I was going to ask was kind of just for you to share kind of the history of how long we've been doing the surveys. And I know we've talked about it before, but just for some framing of what we're discussing. Because I know in the past, when he's presented to the board, he's been able to kind of tell the history. And he'll even, I bet you anything he'll even address that question right there and say, you know what? In the past, there has been this, we know these options, but this is where people believe it is and things. So he usually does a very good job presenting kind of how the trends change. But kind of the history perspective, we've been doing it for how long?
Some of that, so there was a Decision Resources Group, which was back in 2012, some of those original question sets on that. Again, I think one of the things to keep in mind is the context here of COVID-19 has dramatically changed how everyone communicates. So, so part of our goal was to have, what are those baseline kinds of pieces as well? Certainly, this is a different setup than we are in City Hall. We still partner with the city, we still have a desire and interest to get back to the city as well. We do have the technology there, they've done some updating there at City Hall to continue to do that in terms of the cable broadcast. And I think what we're seeing here is that we want to have more ways to communicate than fewer. So it's not, it's something at the expense of something else. So anything we can collect in terms of our data, in terms of what people have their preferred methods of receiving information, I think that's part of the reason why we asked those questions.
And then the other question I had, I believe this, I know the answer, but these questions, these phone calls are going to cell phones as well and not just landlines, correctly?
Correct, it's a miss. And again, to your point earlier, reflecting the changing of times, how many places don't have landlines anymore? You know, in terms of that standpoint. But we, we take a look at just, there's going to be a mix. But again, I think the value comes in that it's a phone conversation, it's not a form that you have to fill out and things like that. But you really have another human that's involved with these as well.
Thank you, are there any other questions regarding the survey? All right, thank you, appreciate the update.
Thank you much.
Thank you, Andrew.
All right, the next item, we're going to discuss the superintendent evaluation process. And this is something as a board, we do, we typically do annually. Last year with the having Jason as interim and then higher, and actually goodness, it was about this time last year we were doing the interviews, that we took a little bit of time to get to this. But typically, we do it around this time of the year, end of the year. And one, there's a few different elements of it. One is we have a staff element where we survey the staff. And this is kind of the prime time to get that process going so we can catch the staff at kind of the end of the year, evaluate how things went with the superintendent. And typically in the past, the superintendent evaluation committee has, it consisted of the executive committee. So it's the chair and the vice chair and then an additional board member. So the first thing is I had asked if there's any inquiries of people that would be interested in serving on that committee? And we have a couple, so I'll mention that in a second. But just to give you an idea of kind of what the time commitment would be, when I was talking with Jaclyn, we're thinking it's probably about three meetings at most, maybe a fourth, depending. The first meeting would be honestly as soon as we can. If we could get a meeting this week, that would be even better. So we can work, sit down, evaluate the process, just kind of maybe tweak the questions if we need to and be able to get that staff survey element out within the next week or so. Because end of the year is approaching and things just get busier and faster. So we need to get that element done. The next couple parts of it are, the board does a survey, we also survey, there's two parts that we survey, the, the, not just the staff, but we also survey the administrators as well. There's two separate pieces to that. And then the next step is evaluating the results and then getting a prepared result to share with the board as well as then after that is putting together the review that we read at the formal board meeting, which reviews how the evaluation went formally for the public. So it's kind of three-step process. And we're looking for one board member. As I said, we'd probably want to meet as soon as we can this week if possible. When Jaclyn and I looked at our schedules, daytime works best for both of us. Most, like more than in evening time, looking at both of our schedules. So that's what we're looking at right now. And I know Kyle and Hannah both have expressed interest in serving on the committee. So are we all, so there you go. So I guess.
I think Kyle would be a great fit.
Okay. So that's what I want to see is kind of looking at your time commitment, just showing what, what we know when we're for our scheduling as well as knowing you guys are both on a few committees that are busy or not so busy in time commitment. So I wanted to throw it out if you each wanted to fight for it or if there was a consensus from the board. Looks like, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate that there's someone new to be able to learn with you and Jaclyn. So I, I think Kyle, I'm more than happy to defer to Kyle if you'd like to.
Yeah.
All right, then we will appoint Kyle to join us on the committee. And we will plan the next steps as soon as possible and update the board as well. So, all right. So that is the end of reports, reports and communications. I would accept an acknowledgement.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge these reports and communications.
Motion by Doral, second by Crowell, all in favor? Any opposed? We have accepted them. All right. Now we're on to Mr. Dan Miller with administrative action. The first item is the approval of the facility use fee schedule adjustments for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
All right, thank you Chair Saucer, members of the board. Just a revisit of what we discussed at the last board meeting regarding our plans or intent or request to update our facility rental fees. As we discussed at the last board meeting, the intent behind this is a basic 5% increase over the current rates in terms of the actual, the rental charges. We did not opt to change any of the permitting requirement fees in the top part of this chart. And just a little bit of history there. We did discover a number of years ago that we were pretty significantly below market value in terms of what we were charging in addition to some deficit spending, basically, meaning that we were not covering even our staffing charges, stuff that we could actually track. And so we knew we needed to make some changes. And at that time, it was our intent to kind of make sequential changes over time instead of doing large increases just to make it more budget-friendly and easier to plan by all of our outside entities. Just, you know, kind of a fairness type of a piece so that people knew what to count on. And so that was our intent. And so that is basically this proposal would be to increase the fees over the current fee structure by 5%. And that would hold for the next two fiscal years. So taking us through FY 2022 and 23. So I don't know, folks have any additional questions?
Appreciate the summary, we talked about this at length at our last board meeting. Are there any additional questions before we go to vote tonight? Seeing none, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the facility use fees schedule adjustments for 2022 and 2023.
Second.
Motion by Crowell, second by Christensen, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and the next item is the TLLC parking lot repavement project.
All right, thank you again Chair Saucer, members of the board. This particular project has, has kind of come about in numerous discussions and communications over the past probably year or so. But with the wrap-up of most of our other significant bond funding projects that we had slated for, this one, we believe, was ready to be taken out for bid based upon the favorable numbers that we have thus far. This was kind of the quasi-relief valve project, for lack of a better way of putting it, to make sure that we had funds available to see it through. Just a little bit of an introduction there. This particular parking lot was not repaired or replaced during the last district-wide round of parking lot repair and replacement that happened a number of years ago. We've got quite a few existing conditions that are problematic. A lot of deterioration of the asphalt to the point where some of it is missing. And right now, if you were to drive over there, you would just see some gravel kind of spread out in various places to kind of even out the ability for vehicles to move in and out of that space. It's got some significant stormwater drainage issues which obviously impacts the longevity and creates some potential problems. We live in Minnesota, so when we have standing water in the winter, it freezes. And that, that has been an ongoing problem. We also want to make some improvements. Currently, if you drive over there, we have a number of waste receptacles. And quite frankly, they just reside in the parking lot and get in the way of a parking lot that is not particularly large to begin with. So we are looking to kind of create a pad for those to get them out of that parking space and, and kind of gain some additional parking spots as well as some unencumbered paths for traffic to flow through. Also, that particular building does not have a loading dock. And so when we get deliveries that are on pallets or, or large, you know, heavy types of delivery, quite honestly, sometimes we end up having to bring our skid loader over and lift them up over some stairs to get them into the building. So not particularly convenient or efficient. And so we did, we kind of put our heads together and came up with a way to create a ramp that would allow us to do that. And then the last bullet item there is because of the grade on the site, we also struggle with the apron, basically that, that area out in front of our maintenance garage is at a slope that does not lend itself to being able to get our plow trucks into the garage. Meaning that when they go into the garage, they literally scrape the plows on, on the pavement and end up doing damage to the site. So we're looking to kind of rectify some of the grade issues that are there. So just a little bit of a, kind of a schematic there in the center just to give you an idea as to kind of the general area that we're talking about in terms of that particular parking lot at that site. And then lastly, just kind of the overall design plan would be to remove and replace the existing layers of asphalt to improve stormwater drainage. There are, would be a number of new catch basins that would be added and some piping and tiling that would allow that water to drain out into the city stormwater system. We had to get a bit creative with that, but we've got a good solution. As I've mentioned before, is to create a ramp for material handling and then regrade that apron ramp. Oh, okay. There we go. Proposed schedule, we would be looking for permission, obviously, this evening to take this project out for bid. Bid opening in early June. And then looking for board approval at the beginning of June with work to begin in July. And then hopefully, project would be significantly, significantly complete in October. And in discussions with architects and engineers, depending upon, that's where this could vary quite significantly depending upon a potential contractor. There, there is some consensus or sentiment that a project. contractor. There is some consensus or sentiment that a project of this nature might be able to attract a contractor that might be able to get in and get this done quite quickly. So, that would be advantageous. In terms of the construction cost estimates, we're looking at our most up-to-date estimates would be right around that 422 mark. I will say that this would probably be on the high end. We are electing to bid this out in a way that there would be a bid alternate on adding some sand fill into this parking lot. This is the only parking lot right now in the district that probably does not have a very quality base underneath the asphalt, which in Minnesota lends to some pretty significant deterioration over time. So, this would be the kind of what we're envisioning being the high end of a bid that would take care of all work that we would like to have done. And once again, there's kind of some mixed sentiment out there, but we, once again, feel like we could get some favorable numbers when it comes to doing some of that excavation to get rid of some of that clay that's immediately underneath the pavement right now and replace it with something with sand that would drain much better and ultimately serve the district much better in the long run in terms of this particular parking lot. So... And in terms of funding source, the intent would be to fund this with 2015 bond dollars. And if, for some reason whatsoever, we needed to, this project would be a viable, we could use LTFM dollars if we needed to. We don't foresee that that would need to be the case, but it allows us some flexibility.
Question.
So, I guess, yes?
So, you're using the bond dollars because we still have remaining-
Correct.
-funds there.
Correct.
But you're saying it could, it would qualify for the long-term-
Correct.
What's the LTFM stands for again?
Long-term Facility Maintenance.
Long-term Facility Maintenance.
Yep.
Got it.
Yep. So, the reason I wanted to include that is, obviously, the board is aware that we have fared quite well, again, with many of the projects that we have taken out for bid that we had anticipated would have drained our 2015 bond funds. And so, because of that, which is a good thing, but because of that, we are now, again, looking for avenues for those bond dollars that we think would be the most advantageous for the district for those dollars. And if it came about that, you know, we were stretching those bond dollars to the point where maybe we couldn't completely fund this project, you know, out of bond dollars, we would have some flexibility, you know, to go after a project that would potentially have to be funded with bond dollars and supplant, you know, and supplant this funding a little bit. So, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Do we have left in the staff up there money LTFM?
In LTFM, well, so this, this one would be out of next year's dollars. So, I mean, so as of right now, the only things that are absolutely kind of committed to would be part of the resurface of the high school track portion. Right now, we're looking at approximately half of the Bachman Auditorium lighting project. We anticipate the work here at the high school should be completed in this fiscal year. And then, obviously, we've got all of our normal health and safety dollar types of things that come out of that. We typically budget also about $250,000-ish for routine mechanical types of things that we do. Probably discretionary-wise right now, we'd probably be looking at about $1 million-ish in FY '22.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Dan, I know that you may not handle all the money for this, but do you know how much we have in the 2015 bond dollar fund at this point?
We would have, now, this is going based upon what has come in thus far in terms of all of our bids. And that, and this would also include this coming completely out of our 2015 bonds. But we would be sitting somewhere between probably 2.7 and 2.9.
Okay.
So, a pretty, and that's why, I mean, that's a, that's a significant amount of money that would allow us to potentially really go after, you know, a project. And so, having some flexibility to potentially get us over the hump to do something, if that's what it came to. That's why we, it's kind of the notion behind the flexibility.
All right.
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
That's okay, Madam Chair. I know as a board, we spent a lot of discussion the last year and a half, two years ago about, you know, are we going to spend money on the building? Are we, you know, where are we going to take this? And what do we want to do with this building? Because as a board, we, you know, we all, I know, we all know that we have to be good stewards of the district's money. And I'm very pleased to see how the building has come along, what's going on, the estimates that have come in to really make a lot of improvements that I personally, as a board member, voting initially to do some work for the remodel, that I didn't think we were going to be able to get to. So, this has been wonderful, because I've parked many times, if it passes on the board, this is, you know, obviously, we haven't voted on it yet. But I've parked many a times in that back parking lot, and it's a nightmare. Because, you know, trying to walk through it when there's a lot of cars and, you know, like your, like your presentation said, standing water, ice, all of that, it's, you know, yeah, it can be very treacherous at some times. So, thank you for all you're doing. It's amazing to see this building come back to life. And I'm a big opponent of restoring older buildings. And so, this has just been a remarkable thing that our district has been able to do. And my goodness, it is heavily used. I mean, thank goodness, we have it with all these new houses and stuff that are now, you know, being developed and whatnot to have that extra space. So, kudos to you, Dan, for really being mindful of the money with us as far as being a good steward of that, but also doing an excellent job on getting things done that really needs to get done for that building. Because it's, my personal opinion is it's really been a blessing that we've been able to do this. So...
All right. Is there a motion? There are no other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the TLLC parking lot repave, repaving, excuse me, project.
Second.
Motion by Crowell, second by Doyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's keep making our buildings and grounds look even better and better, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right. Let me find my notes on this one. So, just to kind of refresh the board community, we've been discussing, we discussed at length in the last work session the potential to add compensation to the board members that serve on the negotiations committee. It's something that we, as a board, decided this year, we wanted to have a more active role in our board members serving on the team, to be more abreast of the issues and being prepared for as we go negotiations. And right away, it was apparent that it was going to be a large-time commitment. And there was discussion on whether we could compensate them and what ways to do so. At the last meeting, the board discussed different options, as well as reviewed what other boards across the county do to compensate their board members that serve in this capacity. We, one thing that was kind of a consensus at the last board meeting was that we didn't want to have it as an hourly rate, because we kind of moved away from that as looking at the board, just for convenience of our time, as well as others that help kind of put that together. So, the discussion was that we wanted to have some sort of flat rate. And there were numbers kind of thrown at the board table. And so, in the meantime, I had asked the board to get back with me what number they thought would be acceptable for this commitment. And I went through, and I sent an email to the board, just kind of summarize what we did. I went through every, the amounts that were given from each board member, and did average of the low end and the high end, because some people gave ranges, and we had a variety of numbers to look through. And based on that, I took the average of the high number and then just basically evened it out a little bit more. And I sent the rationale through the entire board with those numbers. But what I'd like to propose tonight is that we compensate the negotiations committee with $375. There'll be a one-time compensation, and I'd like to propose that it would be presented, that it would be, you know, maybe compensated after the negotiations are over. And in the process, as discussed at the last meeting as well, those that are serving on that committee, as well as Mary Ann, could help as well, just kind of have an estimate of kind of how many hours take place in the cycle, so we can have that as a means for assessment going forward in the future, if it's something we want to continue to have. One, board members on the committee, and two, if we want to keep up the compensation or kind of that stepping piece going forward, since it's a little bit of a new role for our current board. So, that's what I'd like to propose, but I want to open it for discussion before making any motions.
I guess the only thing I have to say is I would abstain from voting, because I don't think it's right. I should vote, since I'm kind of at the benefit of this. So...
And that's fair. Absolutely fair. Are there any other comments?
No, I would just say that I think the information that we were provided at our last meeting around the comparable salaries for surrounding districts was helpful. The one that provided their stipend for their negotiations team was Sal St. Paul, I believe, at $700. And I appreciate that our board is leaning on the conservative side of dollars, especially since this is our first year. And again, knowing that we had two board members who willingly signed up for this before there was a stipend attached to it. So, just want to thank Stephen Jaclyn again, and as well as the approach the board is taking from a strictly conservative standpoint for the starting year for this stipend.
I agree with Hannah.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion to compensate the negotiations committee at 375, a one-time rate upon one completion of negotiations is over. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Saucer, second by Palada. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then note the two extensions that were mentioned before as well, for two members. So, motion carries. And wow, we are too bored of remarks. At the end, I can't talk anymore. But let's, we'll go around the table. Let's start with our student board members today. We'll just kind of go around.
Um, yeah, I guess I would just like to say thank you for all the detail. I always appreciate learning more and more about the different roles that our administration has in the district and what they're doing to help further our education and, yeah, just make our community better. So...
I hear you, you're not going to tell very highly, but I heard there was a special event today at school, like an election. I'm going to give you, I have the floor to share a little bit more.
Um, yeah. So, we had the student council election for vice president and president today, and I received the role of president of student council. So...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, all my sentiments from Grace are the same. It was really fascinating to hear about the equity team. I thought about my own experiences and my own family and just the environment I grew up in. And it was just really, really interesting to hear from like this sort of environment. And so, thank you for that. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to hear all of these different ideas and different discussions. I think it's very valuable for me. And, yeah.
Thank you. We appreciate your input. Thank you for sharing. All right, go ahead, Rebecca.
Huge congrats, Grace. That's incredible. They couldn't have picked a better president. I'm just saying, I'm not biased at all either. Thanks for everyone who came and shared today. Stephen Jaclyn, I thanked you last time at the board meeting, but thanks again for the negotiations team committee that you, like Hannah said, volunteered for without a stipend. You just jumped in, and so, thank you for that. I apologize for getting teared up when they were talking earlier. It was the video that just made me so happy. Anyways, like I said, I've never teared up at a board meeting, but that just did it for me. Congratulations to all the teachers. Last week was teacher appreciation week. You know, one of the benefits that I'm going to use is a special thank you to a very dear teacher, Mr. Timothy Slaughter. So, oh my gosh, what am I doing? This is crazy that I'm just tearing it up like this. But he's an amazing teacher. Thanks for all he did for our family and all the teachers in the district that do so much for all of your children and for all the families in our district. So...
You never need to apologize for sharing your true self, and it's okay to cry.
I've never cried or teared up at a board meeting until-
We all will at some point, if we haven't already in the past. Go ahead, Jaclyn.
Um, similar sentiments, I do appreciate everyone that came to present. And I feel like that's a topic that we could just have a separate entire meeting slash discussion on. So, I appreciate everyone hanging in and spending their time. I'm excited for just kind of the changes that have been happening on the state level and with the mandates and the changes that are going to happen for our students at the end of the year. Something to look forward to and just even what's going to happen next year. So, I could see everyone's faces sooner rather than later. Um, yeah, and we don't meet until after school is over. So, I'm just looking forward to the updates that I'm sure we're going to get via email regarding graduation and prom and hearing how everything went at the end of the year. So, there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
Yep.
Keep going.
Go ahead, Steve.
I guess did all of everything you guys said. Uh, thank you to all the teachers out there, the nurses appreciation coming up, you know, all our staff members. Also, Alicia and Grace, I actually lean on you guys, you know, for your input of what goes on out there. And I appreciate your candidness and your input on that, because it means a lot. I mean, when I look at decisions being made, I turn to you guys and to hear what we can improve on. So, I appreciate your input on whatever topic it is. The topic tonight, equity, was a tough one to talk about, and it's encouraging to see us going down that path. I think we need to continue that, that open dialogue as much as possible. So, appreciate that group being here. But that's all I had to say.
Kyle, go ahead.
Um, yeah, no, yeah, same. I mean, there's a lot of conversation in the area districts and across the state on that topic. And I really appreciate the approach that this district is taking around it, because I think it's practical. And it makes it easy to run towards those types of conversations rather than caught up in some of the noise. And so, I, yeah, I definitely, I definitely value that work. I think it's important for our students and for our community. And again, I just really appreciate the approach taking place here. It's funny, just when you said it, I'd been looking up that we won't be meeting until after graduation. So, that is, that is fun. And it's exciting to see this, this school year come screeching to a halt. Probably a lot of relief for you two and your peers, but, but really lots of excitement with the governor's new announcement. And I don't know if it was mentioned, but I got a note that we had teachers of the year, Emily Holly and Michelle Thompson at Meadowview and Riverview Elementary respectively. So, I mean, in addition to just, you know, I send personal notes to all of my kids' teachers, and my wife led the effort to bring some snacks and things like that into the breakroom. But those two in particular deserve a congratulations for their recognition here in ISD 192. So, that's it. Thanks, everybody.
Hannah, go ahead.
Thanks to echo the many sentiments tonight. Just thanks to everyone who's still here, still awake this evening. Really appreciate the administration team and everyone who presented. Thanks to my fellow board members. I think the really exciting for me, being a new board member this year, is the opportunity to be an ambassador for all of the great things that are happening. And I know the passion that you all share for that, too, and especially as it relates to equity work and the opportunity that we each have to model that ability to be, get comfortable being uncomfortable and to continue having those conversations, you know, with our kids and with each other. And so, really appreciate that as a board. And excited for the banquets and things at the end of the year. Looking forward to those. I know he said there might be watch parties and that, you know, school board members can be invited. So, don't forget, we'd love to come support you if you would like that. And otherwise, really excited to be involved in my first graduation as a school board member this year. Can't wait for that. Congratulations to all the seniors that are graduating this year. So glad it's going to look very different from last year and more normal. Can't wait. And we'll see the rest of you in June, too.
As you know, you guys, it's hard to go last. But I appreciate the student updates and hearing the changes for prom. I wanted to be that cautionary. Be responsible and be safe with your prom plans for everyone. We don't want to have any, we want everyone to be safe this weekend. So, have fun, but be responsible. And a couple other things of interest, talking about the end-of-the-year events. And the one reason for history of why we've had typically, we've changed to having one board meeting in May, is typically we have so many events at the end of the year, from the banquet, to the awards, the concerts, to the fairs, all the different things that go on, that it just, we decided as a board, it was best to be able to allow the board to have more time to have attendance in those events, and then vergo the second meeting in May. And so, while there are still, the events are being some digitally and maybe reduced this year, I encourage you to do what you can to be supportive of them. And also, I ask the superintendent as well to let us know what events is going on. In that vein, we typically do board rocks if board members are available in the spring and in the fall, when time works. And this year, it still could be a little bit different, but is if that is something that you wish to participate in, or if there are events that you'd like to drop in on-
that you wish to participate in, or if there are events that you'd like to drop in on, let us know, and also asking, you know, Lori, as well as the administration, to let us know if there are events that would be advantageous for us to be able to drop in on, as well to kind of, kind of do that dual-part piece, drop in seeing events as well as visit the school. So, keep those in mind with this year. I know I'm itching to get in the schools. It was one thing I loved about that video that was shared today, was it was just kind of like, we haven't been able to be in the buildings any more than any alternate community has, and just to be able to see and glance and to see what those walls look like, it's just kind of nice. It was like, it was like a little boardwalk right there for the whole community, so that was cool. Somewhat personal note, but also a district, my goodness, two weekends ago, it was, it was cabaret at the school, and it's always one of my favorite events, I'm a huge choir show tune nerd, but it was really neat to attend the events, because we had so many students that were doing solos and duets, and to be able to almost have normalcy, where the audience was full, albeit in masks and socially distanced, but to have live music and live performance, like the play a couple, like a month or so ago, just, it just filled my heart with just joy. And talking about breaking down after the event, I went and talked to choir directors, and I got up there, and I went to say thanks, and I, floodgates, like I broke down, too. And it was just so nice to see the return to normalcy and knowing that light at the end of the tunnel is almost here, and we're getting closer and closer, and just grateful for the endurance and grit that everyone has gained this last year and a half, and the modifications we've had to make, but also the joy and what can come from out of it, and having so many people involved and being able to modify things. And there are some events coming up in the next few weeks, too, with Fand and different things as well, so get out and get involved as much as you feel comfortable to do so and attend in the ways that you are welcome to do. So, thanks to all involved in all those pieces, and I've talked enough, and we've had a very long meeting, so I can take a motion.
Chair, can I say?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I did go for a walk today at the high school.
Yeah, okay.
And I have to tell you, Principal Pickens, I actually got to see the monitor in his office, where he can actually see everything going on in school district, at the high school. I encourage board members to go in there. It's very impressive, he can see the, every exit, pretty much all the hallways and stuff. He can zoom in, zoom out.
Are you leaking security secrets? We shouldn't be saying live here.
When we talk about safety and security, though, you want to talk about technology at its best. I mean, it was incredible to see how they could zoom in on different things and what's going on in the building. So, kudos to that technology. I had no idea that we had that. So, I asked Mr. Pickens, I go, what are you doing with this huge monitor? He goes, come over here, let me show you. Totally impressive, totally impressive, so kudos to that. That's all I have.
Nope, that's fine. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:44.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by, I think everyone, I'll give it to Coletta. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned. Motion adjourned.